Good evening. I call to order the Lake Havasu City Council Regular Meeting on Tuesday, September 10, 2024 at 5:30 PM. We'll have an invocation from Pastor Tim Giles with Inspire the Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Scott Armbruster and Doug Paling with #YouMatter. Pastor?
Thank you for inviting me in tonight. I'm just going to pray over our leaders, both elected and unelected, and then we'll allow God to work. Pray with me. Heavenly Father, we just come to you right now, and we ask, Lord, for grace and wisdom. The Scriptures say that if anyone lacks wisdom, we should ask you, and you'll give to all liberally. So we ask you, God, for wisdom tonight. Wisdom that we would have listening ears, understanding hearts, and wise, healing words. Father, I thank you for giving wisdom to our leaders, elected and unelected. Give us grace for one another. Lord, I pray that this meeting would yield to the prosperity, the peace, and the safety of Lake Havasu City and all its residents and visitors. And we just thank you for this. I pray in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And if you would like to share a little bit about #YouMatter with us?
Are you facing you guys or that way?
Yeah, you'll face us. That way the folks at home also can see. So.
Good evening, and thank you to the mayor and the city council for allowing us to share a little bit about YouMatter. I'm Doug Paling, and this is Scott Armbruster, and we're both with the #YouMatter Suicide Awareness and Prevention Group. YouMatter started about nine years ago when we had a student suicide in Lake Havasu Public Schools. I was the school psychologist. The newspaper interviewed me, and we... I got a call from Bob Feliciano. He's a... He was a Los Angeles County Police Officer and the father of a son who committed suicide at Santa Barbara. And so we got together, and nine years later, we're going to have our eighth annual Suicide Awareness Walk on Saturday down at Rotary Park. For those of you behind me, you can see my shirt. This is your... This year's walk shirt. Our mission is to provide suicide awareness and prevention strategies. We have brought in speakers such as Kevin Hines, who is one of 38 survivors of jumping off the Golden Gate Bridge. We brought in Melvin Adams to Lake Havasu High School. He's a motivational speaker. He played for the Harlem Globetrotters. He also played in the NBA, and his message was, you know, follow your dreams. You can overcome adversity. But Scott, I would like Scott to tell his story.
Hi, everybody. I'm Scott Armbruster, and I lost a son about almost 12 years ago, and it rocked my little boat. And this is his birthday month, and so this really means a lot to me. And, you know, when I saw this article in the paper that they had written up, I followed along what they were doing, and then I found out that they were at the Havasu Health Foundation. And it was right after that, right before that, that I had woke up and told my wife, "I want to help people." And that's why I got involved with this thing. This is my eighth year on this walk, and I love every second of it because we get to help people that might be going through some stuff. You know, we don't know what you're going through. Everybody goes through poo poo, and you've got to get to the other side of it. And we like to show people that you can get to the other side of it and do it with pride and dignity and a smile. And that's about it. We have a walk on Saturday. Hopefully, we can see every one of you guys there, every single person there. It's only 30 bucks, and you get a shirt. So come on down. Join us. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for all your work. Thank you for bringing awareness to Lake Havasu City on this important matter. Item four is the roll call. Ms. Williams, if you please, call the roll.
Councilmembers Nancy Campbell.
Here.
Michelle Lynn.
Here.
Jenny Koch.
Here.
Jim Dolan.
Here.
David Lane.
Here.
Vice Mayor Cameron Moses.
Here.
Mayor Kal Sheehy.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item five is the Consent Agenda. Would any of the council members like to remove any of the items for separate discussion?
Mayor.
Councilmember Koch?
Motion?
Please.
Move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilmember Koch, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. We are ready to vote. Hey, Councilmember Koch, I believe... Oh, there you are. Okay, perfect.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item six is our Correspondence Communications Petitions Announcements and the City Manager Report. Item 6.1 is the Fiscal Year 2023-24 Fourth Quarter Contracted Agency Reports. Chief Sterling included these in our Council Communication Packet, and they're also available on the website for citizens to review. Item 6.2 is Announce Vacancies on the Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, there are several vacancies on Lake Havasu City Boards, Committees, and Commissions. The following is a listing of those vacancies. Board of Adjustment, one regular member and one alternate member; and the Planning and Zoning Commission, one regular member. Anyone interested can pick up a packet at City Hall, and they are also available on the city's website at LHCaz.gov. Thank you.
Thank you. Item 6.3 is our City Managers Report. Good evening, Mr. Knutson.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. A lot has happened in the last few weeks I'd like to share with you this evening. Starting off with our high school students, who serve on our Havasu Youth Advisory Council, or HIAAC, attended this year's League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference along with the mayor, city council, and city staff. The conference provided us with valuable insights, networking opportunities, and resources that will greatly support our ongoing efforts to effectively serve our residents and our community here in Lake Havasu City. We had two of our councilmembers that were recognized for years of service. Councilmember Jenny Koch was recognized for 12 years of service on the Lake Havasu City Council, and Councilmember David Lane was honored for eight years of service on our city council here in Lake Havasu City. So congratulations. Of course, at our last council meeting, the City Clerk's Office presented certificates of election to councilmembers Nancy Campbell, Cameron Moses, and as well as Councilmember-elect David Diaz. So our new council will officially be seated, and everybody will take office on the November 26 council meeting, just right around the corner. Vice Mayor Cameron Moses was selected to participate in the prestigious 2024 Flynn Brown Fellowship. It's an honor that recognizes his dedication to civic leadership in Arizona. The Flynn Brown Fellowship provides an invaluable opportunity for both emerging and experienced leaders to expand their knowledge in critical state issues, enhance their skills in leadership and public policy, and build a powerful network of civic-minded individuals from across Arizona. I'm very proud of your accomplishment, and best of luck and good wishes as you help shape Arizona's future. And I'd like to bring to the council's attention that each Sunday, the Today's News Herald honors a military veteran from Lake Havasu City. And in just this last Sunday's edition on September 8, one of our very own city employees, retired General Robert Kane, was featured. We're incredibly proud to have General Kane as part of our city team. His service and leadership, both in the military and now within our community, are an inspiration to all of us, and I'd like to recognize him for all of his accomplishments and thank him for his service here at Lake Havasu City as our airport manager. Lake Havasu City gathered to honor the 13 U.S. service members and other victims of the 2021 Kabul terrorist attack. Councilmembers Nancy Campbell, David Lane, Cameron Moses, along with city staff, attended the ceremony at the Havasu Memorial Walkway, and special thanks for the Marine Corps League Detachment 757 for leading this event. Lake Havasu City Police Department Cadet Program extends its gratitude to Site 6 Armory for their generous donation of new training uniforms. The program offers a local youth ages 14 to 21 a chance to explore a career in law enforcement by working directly with professionals. As the cadets are self-funded, support from the community partners like Site 6 Armory is invaluable. To support our cadets or learn more about the program, please contact us through the city's website or call our police department directly. The fall event season is quickly kicking off. Summer is almost over, and the mayor's office is actively recognizing the many charitable organizations and their outstanding contributions to our community. Mayor Sheehy recently presented a proclamation declaring the week of September 8 through September 14 as 2024 National Assisted Living Week. This year's theme is inspiring generations as we urge all citizens to take this opportunity to visit friends and loved ones residing in assisted living facilities and celebrate the valuable connections that inspire and uplift future generations. Mayor Sheehy presented a proclamation to the Daughters of the American Revolution, declaring the week of September 17 through September 23 as Constitution Week in Lake Havasu City. Commemorating the U.S. Constitution has been a longstanding project of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution. Their dedication to preserving the principles of our founding document highlights the importance of educating citizens and fostering a deeper understanding of the Constitution's role in shaping our nation's democracy. And Mayor Sheehy proclaimed October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Lake Havasu City as we urge all of our residents to support cancer survivors and participate in activities designed to increase awareness, aid in prevention, and enhance the detection and treatment of all forms of cancer. And then, as we just heard through the Pledge of Allegiance, Vice Mayor Cameron Moses will present the proclamation... Oh, I'm sorry. It's another event that's coming up. Cameron Moses will present the proclamation at the Breast Cancer Awareness Kickoff Walk that'll take place on September 21 at 7:30. So lots of good things happening. On behalf of Mayor Sheehy, Councilmember David Lane presented a proclamation to celebrate the amazing improvements to the Island Ball Field alongside a ribbon-cutting ceremony hosted by the Lake Havasu City and the Lake Havasu Area Chamber of Commerce Ambassador Committee. Thanks to a fantastic partnership between the city and the Lake Havasu Chiefs Youth Football and Cheer Organization, the Island Ball Field has undergone some incredible enhancements, including two brand-new field goals, some fresh fencing and gates with turf... There was included some turf removal to enhance the turf playing surface to make it a much more smooth playing field for our youth in that area. So the improvements look great. And Mayor, you celebrated the annual opening of the Echo Group Band of Brothers Arizona Veterans Softball League and threw the ceremonial first pitch to start the season. The Veterans Softball League offers our veterans peer-to-peer mentoring, camaraderie, and renewed sense of purpose, helping them connect with fellow veterans and combat isolation, ultimately working to lower the suicide rate among our most vulnerable heroes. For more information about the Echo Group Band of Brothers Arizona Softball League, you can go to echo vets.org or contact Stacy Lee at 805-757-8223. Thank you for River Scene for the pictures. Maybe next time I can have a video of you throwing the pitch? No?
He caught it.
And lastly, the city employees demonstrated their school spirit for Lake Havasu High School by proudly wearing their purple game day shirts. So we encourage everyone to join in and show your support by wearing your purple shirts on Fridays for the football season. And don't miss out on the excitement as Lake Havasu High School's first home game... They have several away games, but the first home game is coming up on October 4 at 7:00 PM. So get out and show your support. And with that, Mayor, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Knutson. All right, we'll move on to item seven, which is the public hearings. So during each of our public hearings, we'll have an opportunity for citizens to address us on the items that are on those particular public hearings. We do encourage you to talk during that portion of the meeting if you have any questions, comments, thoughts, or you want to add to the conversation for each of those public hearings. There will be a call to the public at the end of the meeting. That will be an opportunity for citizens to address the council on items within the jurisdiction of the community, but we won't be able to have a two-way conversation. We'll be able to do that during the public hearings. We do ask during the public hearings that you address the councils. So your comments will be directed directly to the councils. So just face forward, state your comments, your thoughts, whatever you may have, directly to us and that we keep you informed throughout the meeting. We have some pretty large items that we'll be going through this evening, all in day's work, but we want to make sure everyone's respected, the voices are heard, and that the council can ask thoughtful questions before a final decision is made on the public hearing. We'll start with item 7.1, which is a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Family Dollar, number 26559, located at 90 Akoma Boulevard. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Catherine Marie Gomes has applied for a Series 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Family Dollar, number 26559, located at 90 Akoma Boulevard North. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 10 liquor license. I'm happy to answer any questions, and a representative is also in attendance remotely to answer any questions from the city council.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the city council? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 10 Beer and Wine Store Liquor License for Family Dollar, number 26559, at 90 Akoma Boulevard North.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Lane. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.2 is a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar located at 3465 Maricopa Avenue. Ms. Williams?
Mayor and City Council, Travis Christopher Francis has applied for a Series 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar located at 3465 Maricopa Avenue. All posting requirements have been met, all fees have been paid, and no objections were received. The location is properly zoned for a Series 12 liquor license. I'm also happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is also in attendance tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions from members of the council for Ms. Williams on this item? All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion?
Mayor motion?
Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, I move to recommend that the Arizona Department of Liquor Licenses and Control approve a Series Number 12 Restaurant Liquor License for Rotary Kitchen and Bar, 3465 Maricopa Avenue.
Second.
We have a motion from Vice Mayor Moses, a second from Councilmember Koch. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Item 7.3 is Resolution Number 24-3776, approving a major general plan amendment revising the future land use map designations for 1850 Bahama Avenue, Track 115, Block 4, lots 11 through 13, and 21 through 23, and Block 5, lots 1 through 9, 14.08 acres from high-density residential to resort-related mainland. Mr. Gilbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The applicant is in attendance, and there will be one that'll be coming in on the teams on the screens as well for this hearing. This is the last of three public hearing dates on this major general plan amendment application. The first two public hearings were held before the Planning Commission on June 19 and July 17, 2024, in accordance with state statutory requirements for major plan amendments. Immediately following this hearing will be a separate hearing regarding the zoning change and the general development plan for this project. The subject property is a group of smaller lots, as you can see up on the screen right now, that have been combined into one parcel located at 1850 Bahama Avenue and comprises approximately 14.1 acres in total. Lake Havasu Avenue is the next major intersection to the west down Bahama Avenue, and Industrial Boulevard is the next major intersection to the east, which are both visible on the screen. Regarding the general plan map, the subject property is shown as high-density residential land use category that permits up to 20 dwelling units per acre and is compatible with a large part of the surrounding area, and that is the brown that you see where the mouse is. The applicant is requesting resort-related mainland land use to accommodate a mixed commercial residential resort-style development. To the north across Bahama Avenue is a commercial mixed-use land use with light industrial development upon it, such as storage units, which are right here, and assembly warehouse units, which are on either side of those storage units. To the east and west are high-density residential land uses with apartments and condominiums to the west, and that is down here. And this continues to expand out with additional units. And mostly vacant land to the east, and that is this area up here towards Industrial. To the south is high-density residential land use designation. That is this area right here that I'm highlighting, but is primarily developed with single-family residential uses. Regarding the zoning map, the subject property is shown as residential multifamily, and that is this area here, which I'm outlining. To the north across Bahama Avenue is light industrial. To the east and west are residential multifamily. To the south is single-family zone property. And that's all the yellow that you see right here. Regarding the general development plan, the applicant intends to construct a multi-phase resort-style development incorporating a surf pool, cliff diving feature, commercial activities, including restaurants, and a combination of condominiums and apartment units, although the details will be worked out later in the engineering phase. The development plan has been updated since the Planning Commission hearings to reduce the number of units down to 172 total for a revised density of 12.2 units per acre and includes eliminating one structure entirely, replacing it with parking, and also reducing the remaining structures to 55 feet in height. The Planning Commission action that was taken on this application... The Planning Commission recommended denial of this requested major general plan amendment by a vote of four to three following its July 17, 2024, second public hearing, as required by Arizona statutes. The first public hearing was held on June 19, 2024. In a final note, mending the general plan is required to accommodate the rezoning and planned development application being heard following this item in order to be in conformance with the general plan future land use map. Mr. Mayor, that completes my presentation. Now answering any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gilbert. Are there any questions, Mr. Gilbert, on this presentation? Would the applicant like to make a presentation at this point? Oh, Councilmember Campbell? Yes.
I just had a question. I didn't go to the planning and zoning portion of this. Is this... Or what we're seeing tonight is exactly the same thing that was in front of planning and zoning, or has it changed?
They have toned... The initial request was bigger. They've toned it down by eliminating a building and the top floor off all the other residential structures.
Then it wouldn't be customary to go back through the planning and zoning for another revote? Or why is it... I mean, I would love to hear their direction at this point.
The applicants were attempting to address the deficiencies that they saw in the plan based on the public comment that was received.
And based on the topography of the land, is the height that they're reducing down to 52 feet? Is that correct?
That is correct.
55?
That's the building from pad to roof height. That has nothing to do with the elevation, the max grade. It's the... Each individual building was 65. They're reducing to 52. There were six residential buildings. One of them's gone, so it's five. And those remaining five have given up a floor down to 52 feet. So there's one less floor in each of those now.
What would be the current height allowance for today? If we don't... What is it? What did they buy? Is what I'm trying to say. What was their height allowance?
Well, RM brings with it a 30-feet height limit, but also brings a 20-units-per-acre density max. Their current density max that they're proposing is 12.2 units per acre. So it would be lower than what apartments could potentially bring, but the height that they're requesting to leave extra open space is above what that high limit for the RM district would allow.
If I understand correctly, this road... This piece of property drops about 22 feet from the highest point to the lowest point. I don't... I would... If it was me, as a developer, I would have probably worked with the topography of the property and tried to stay within my height limits. So, okay, thank you for answering those questions. I appreciate it.
Are there any additional questions before we bring the applicant up? All right, would the applicant... May I like to make a presentation?
Says I'm connected. Not sure if there's anything else. For this, or is there a switch?
Yeah, the control room might be taking a look at it to see if they can get the screens on.
I've been assured it's not just me.
Perfect.
This guy, thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Mayor Sheehy, Manager Knutson, esteemed members of the council, a privilege to be here with you tonight. My name is Cole Cannon. I'm the prime developer of this project. And I want to just give a quick 90-second backstory on how my introduction to Lake Havasu went. So I came out here on an airplane on a one-way flight to look at some property, look at some things, enjoy the weather, enjoy the lake. And when I went to go home, Phoenix is my home, I couldn't get a rental car, which is what my plan was, right? I'm going to get a rental car, one-way, no problemo, no rental cars. I said, "Honey, I can't get a rental car," called my wife. And I said, "I'm going to get a hotel for the night." No hotels. Tried Airbnb, tried Verbo, nothing. I tried renting a U-Haul truck. True story, couldn't get one. Then I tried a Home Depot truck. When I exhausted all opportunities and I was effectively homeless in the city, I'm an Uber. The first two Uber drivers politely, when they realized where I was going, they said, "No, thank you." And the third gentleman, he opens his door. "Phoenix, come on in, partner, let's go." So he gave me a five-hour ride back to Phoenix, and that was my first visit to Lake Havasu. And I learned something that night that you have a really good thing going for you in this city. And my hope is that we can help make it better by bringing it amenity that, you know, might leave people like myself a little less stranded next time with a fun place to go, especially for families. I'm developing the largest and the only surf park in Arizona currently. It's in Mesa, Arizona. It's a $300 million project, which is what you're looking at. This is a rendering of it, but we're hoping to open next month in Mesa. And so I'm very cued in, I guess, to the surf culture. I want to give a little bit of my why. So I'm a father of six children, all under the age of 13. And for me, I have sort of a life mission to get kids off of screens. That's important to me. And we know the pollution that comes through those screens, and I'm trying to get kids to be active, to engage with their bodies, to challenge themselves in wholesome, community-oriented, family-type activities. And that's what I hope to bring here to Lake Havasu City. I'll show you a couple of videos here. So what you're looking at on the screen is... That's actually the Castile Junior High School surf team. Nobody probably would have ever thought you'd have a surf team in the middle of Arizona. But lo and behold, we did it. That's the type of community engagement that we might, if we're successful, build at Lake Havasu High School, have a surf team out here to engage this community. Have a surf team out here to engage this community. There's a little video here I'll show you. We have, this is my daughter, actually. And you know, this is a scary moment for her and maybe a little bit nerve wracking for me as a dad. This is what's called a river wave or a standing wave. And so she's got a life jacket on. She's a non-surfer because she's from inland Arizona. And here I am letting go of her. This is the first time she's ever surfed, a very proud dad moment. And I'm hoping to imbue these type of memories in all of the families here at Lake Havasu and also all the visitors that come. Come visit this great city. The other thing that we, that I've discovered as I've visited Lake Havasu with my family in subsequent visits is that it's very hard for a family of six to stay in hotels. Hotels are wonderful. I obviously stay in them a lot. But when I've got a family of six, I have extended family or partners or friends. I'm really looking for an Airbnb or I'm looking for extended, you know, lockout rooms. I can connect rooms or I'll have to book multiple rooms. And so I have an eye towards that as a father of six. And so our development is really not just one and two bedroom suites. We have upwards of six bedroom suites in some, some of these rooms. Not all, not all of them, of course, but some of them are. So that just gives you a flavor of what we're up against. I'm going to show you just another quick video. This is a full traveling lagoon. And the only reason I'm kind of showcasing this, this is not what we'll be building in Lake Havasu. We don't have the area for it. Me and my partners invented this wave here in Mesa. And as a result of that, we're, like I said, very cued in to the surf culture. And if I did a poll of this room, and I won't do it tonight. If I ask everybody, how many of you like the beach? I bet you 99% of the hands go up. Everybody loves the beach. If I asked the same group of people, how many of you like surfing? I'm probably going to get maybe 10% of them. So what we're programming here is actually a beach that has surfing, not a surf park that has a little bit of a beach. So my point is this development that we're building, even though we're all looking at surfers on these videos, it's as much and more of a beach than it is a surf resort, which means it's available and friendly to everybody. From grandpa down to grandson, there's something for everybody. If you want to sit on the side, drink your pina colada, watch the surfers. If you want to build a sand castle, if you want to do a six foot cliff dive all the way up to a 30 foot cliff dive for the bigger kids, we can do that. Trying to create something for everybody. That's really important to my thesis here. Let's just move along. As Mr. Gilbert properly said, our original application had 221 units. Importantly, that is 59 below what the code, what the zoning allows for. So just to be clear on what I'm not asking for tonight, I'm not asking for a variance for density. I'm actually doing a density reduction in what the current zoning permits us to do, which is 280 units. The original plan that we presented is shown on the screen. That's 221 units and six buildings. I'll spare you some of the other details, but we heard the feedback of the citizens. That's important to us. We wanted to address it. And this is just another aerial view of that original plan. The main concerns that we heard were with traffic, the building height, the water and the parking. And we addressed every one of those to the best of our ability. One of those concerns was a dead man's curve as you approach on Bahama Avenue. We moved the main entrance to our project to accommodate that. The height of the building has been well articulated. We reduced it from five stories down to four stories. We also reduced the number of buildings so that the massing is a little less populated. And in doing so, and keeping that height variance, we actually are creating that, as was properly said, more open space, more family community area, more hangout time. And that's what we're all about. Madam Campbell, you had mentioned the height and being 30 feet. So the Havasu code has sort of a unique provision that you do, you follow the topography. So I would respectfully maybe ask for confirmation, but my understanding of reading the code, and I have this confirmed by email, is we actually can go up to 60 feet for this particular property. So now at the 55 feet, we're actually below the standard based on the topography for it. Nonetheless, we, we've done our best to reduce that density. And folks, I, I can't promise you, we have market forces at work. I can't promise you that in the end, we're actually going to build 172 units. A lot of this is market driven, but I'm committed to this area. And I think that this area would benefit immensely by having a surf attraction. And we'll start with one building. And if that fills up, we'll add another building. If that fills up and so forth, we'll get through it. I got a lot of mixed messages at the planning commission level. And it was hard for me to decipher through all of them because on one hand, I heard some concerns, citizens say, gee, what we really need is more affordable housing. On the other hand, people said, the last thing we want is affordable housing. And this is a big ploy that Mr. Cannon is going to turn this into an affordable housing thing. I'm not sure what the city actually wants, but I am hoping to find out tonight. And the reason I want to find out tonight is because respectfully, I'm not going to beg. If the city doesn't want this, life's too short and I'll just move on to the next project. Maybe we'll turn it into a 280 apartment building, you know, that we can do under the code. But if you don't want it, I'd rather know now than argue with you for the next five years, right? There's plenty of cities who are recruiting us to build surf assets there. And if you don't want to be one of them, then, then we understand that. So this is our modified plan. The sneak peek was already given to you from staff, but here it is now with five buildings. At the center of it is our zero entry beach, that dark blue spot that you see on the cursor. Yeah, the dark blue there is a cliff diving. So one of the things I deal with as a parent, I have a five year old and I have a 13 year old. So just picture me at Disney World and it's a terrible place for me to go with all those kids. But the 13 year old is really bored on the little rides for the little kids. And the little kids are terrified and can't even go because they're not tall enough on the big kid rides. So what's it turn into? Mom, you take the big kids over there and dad's going to take the little kids over here and I'll see you in six hours and we'll get a pretzel or something, right? So trying to change that thinking and saying, okay, here at the lagoon, I don't care if you're a one and a half year old or if you're a 90 year old, everybody can do the beach entry, the zero beach entry. If you want to get a little bit of adrenaline, get a little bit of the vibe, I have a six foot platform all the way up to a 30 foot platform. 30 feet is pretty hefty. So all of a sudden, my family and many of these folks and their families can now enjoy all levels of progression. And the littlest kid, my five year old, she's going to start on that six footer and then she's going to the 10 footer and then the 12 footer and the 17, and then maybe one day the 30 footer. Again, trying to create something for everybody. We, like I said, we, we addressed the parking issues, we addressed the entrance issues. One of the variances here, as was well articulated, we're talking about going to a resort style development. What that really allows us to do is to open up the restaurant and the surf wave. And I'm going to get to that picture. Here's a 3D picture. Okay, here's a good rendering. This is another development in Texas that really paints a good picture for us. To be clear, this is not my project. This is in Texas, though we will be building in Texas here soon. This is the standing wave and around it, you have a restaurant. So you can see that couple there enjoying their drinks. Doesn't look like they have wetsuits on or swimsuits on, but they're just out there hanging out, vibing with these people. And they're, so again, you don't have to be a surfer to enjoy this. What the variance we're seeking is allowing us to do exactly what you're seeing on the screen. Invite members from the public to come hang out at this wave. Otherwise, it can only be open to the people that stay at our facility or our members of the HOA or our renters, long term or short term or otherwise. So that's, that's an important variance that we're seeking. And we, we hope that's received well by this council because again, it's opening it up to more of your users. Here's that same park, here's sort of a, an aerial view of it. That pool, I think, is 15 meters wide. Ours will be 30 meters wide, so you can actually have two surfers at once on it. And the surfers, by the way, last about 30 seconds. They get too tired and they have to, have to exit. Here's some renderings. Don't hold me to them, but these are some of our initial sketches, just to kind of give you a look and feel of what we hope this project will turn into. And again, we'll stagger this in phases, which will be decided at that site planning stage. Cliff diving, this is the actual cliff diving, rendering of a cliff diving that we've completed out in Mesa. We're actually putting plaster in it next Wednesday, so we're about finished with that. And I, I'll show you just one picture of an adult surfing. Oh, you're going to get some volume, I guess. That's my business partner surfing on this. So I just show that to illustrate that it's, it's available for all levels. This standing wave that we have in Mesa is only 10 meters wide, whereas the one we plan to build here in Mesa will be 20 meters wide. So just picture double, double that width. Oops, okay. The economics, full disclosure, this is not a full impact, economic impact analysis, but I've done a lot of these things. And so just at a napkin calculation, the direct benefits to the city are upwards of $23 million in the next 10 years. That's just tax revenue, that's bed tax, sales tax. And that's money that you guys can use. I, I heard some of the concerns last time about, gosh, we might be short on fire. We might be short on police, police funding. And that is a common rebuff and I understand that. And hopefully this project is a contributor and to assisting to alleviate that problem and not a drain on your system. The 20 year benefit is $54 million. And again, that's just to the city. This is not talking about the indirect benefits that are elsewhere. Let's see here. This is sort of a silly thing, but this is the alternative. This is 280 units. I think this is too much, but this is what your zoning allows for. I'm not interested in doing that currently, but I think it's important to see what the alternative is because as was properly noted by Mr. Gilbert, we went from 20 units per acre down to 12.2. That's a significant reduction of what we're entitled to do. And Ms. Campbell, to your point, when I bought it, that was the promise, that was the zoning. I wasn't trying to do anything sneaky. I walked into the city council or city staff before I bought it and we said, we are open for business. We'd love to have your project. This is exactly what Lake Havasu needs. So I was trying to walk through the front door the best that I could. Obviously, there's going to be some resistance to this. This, this piece of property, I think, has been for sale prior to me buying it and my partner buying it for 15 years it sat on the market and nobody bought it. So I don't blame neighbors for getting accustomed to the vacancy and saying, well, that's the new normal and we're just going to want to keep it that way. But again, I've done the best I can. And given that we're up against an industrial building there on the side of the project, I think we have about as minimal neighbors as we can have. To address the traffic very briefly, we commissioned a traffic impact study. That, that consultant met with the city traffic folks, they talked. And the conclusion is that this project is not going to have a significant, it's not going to move the needle for your traffic. Now, there is an intersection on Bahama and Lake Havasu Boulevard you will have to address. But it says you're going to have to address that whether this gets built or not. So full disclosure, that's, that's a problem you all have. And maybe the $23 million I can bring to the city in the next 23 years will, or 10 years will, will help with that. So what we have here is, I guess, my final slide. The original plan is in the upper left. The modified plan with a lot more open space, more buffering between neighborhoods is there on the, on the upper right. And then what could be under the current zoning and frankly, a lot less fun, folks. No water, no cliff diving, no beach, that's no fun, is there on the bottom. So I really hope that we can have your support. I hope it's the same support that I was welcomed with when I met with the staff originally, who was very accommodating and was sort of a cheerleader for this project from day one and walking us through their process. And I, we've done our best to comply with it. So I know I've done a lot of talking. Any questions from the council or Mr. Mayor for me?
Thank you, Mr. Cannon. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of questions. So first, I don't want you to mistake open for business and open arms to of how we're going to navigate people from a customer service perspective through our code with, with implied approval. That's not how it works. So, but we, we do have open arms to work with anyone that lives in Lake Havasu City or owns property that we can usher them through the process. And this is, you know, the final step to your process. So I just want to make sure there's no confusion there. I watched through both of the public hearings that we had through Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm not really sure what the operation is. So today, today is the first time actually I've seen any of this part of it. I, I've heard it in some words, but I never really saw the operation through the last two public hearings that occurred. It was very confusing on what this is. Is it a hotel? Is it apartments? Build one building, see if that's good, then we'll build a second building. There really isn't, what is the operation? So who are you intending the users to be in the operation? I think I understand the, the water park component. I think it's going to be locals and, but I don't know who, who they, who's the and, what's this operation?
The and are out of staters. So as the city council well knows, your short-term rentals have escalated 400% in the last four years. I mean, it's really become a popular destination. And so we expect to capture some of that market from out of staters. And the benefit to that, not to say we're going to solve this problem, but I own some short-term rentals in other cities. And one of the common problems we have is people like to party. Kids like to party late at night and you're in residential neighborhoods. And that means our good officers here in Blue need to show up at two in the morning and tell the people to be quiet. Alcohol involved. And so we want to concentrate those tourists in a tourist resort style location, singular location and out of the individual neighborhood. So yes, we believe it'll be out of staters. We also think that a lot of the grandparents that are here, when their kids come to town, they're going to maybe stay here and then have staycations, if you will, and come visit. So we don't, we don't, I can't identify exactly what that demographic looks like other than we have a lot of variability. So we have everything from one bedroom units up to six bedroom units. So we can accommodate big families, small families, et cetera. And Mayor Sheehy, I want to confirm, I, I wasn't suggesting that your staff was giving me any special benefits or anything, but they were very helpful. And they said, we love doing business, we love recruiting development, here's our land use code, follow it religiously. Here's, you know, so I wasn't saying there was any special treatment there other than I got the sense that this is a city who's very progressive and excited to have new and exciting projects. That's it.
I appreciate that. Yeah. So you're saying this is a hotel? It's a resort hotel?
Essentially, it's a, it's a hotel.
Transiloging, so no, no long-term rentals?
Well, we don't expect that. These two buildings you see again, we're in the upper right-hand corner, those two buildings off to the side. There's a little pool in the area and that's sort of what I would consider phase two of this project. If there's going to be any condos on this project, it would be in that location. So close to the party, but not sort of in the party. There's a little bit of music and things like that. And by the way, we're very sensitive to the music thing because in Cannon Beach Mesa, we have, we're, we're planning to build a four star hotel. It's literally 150 feet away from the water. So we've spent lots of money designing sound systems that keep the sound inward toward the water and not outward to the rooms. And that's important when you're talking about neighbors out here. We don't want to disrupt them either. I don't want phone calls to my management team at two in the morning. I'm trying to lessen that problem for the city and not increase it.
So it'll, so the operation then, as you, it would be more of a resort hotel type experience is what you're, you're going to move forward. That also wasn't clear during the public hearings of the ownership structure. So it is, it's owned by whatever ownership group it is, but you're not condo-ing them out or?
Current plan is not to timeshare, not to condo.
Okay.
I'm not going to promise that won't change, but that, that doesn't have interest to me. I get, I can hear the grumblings.
No, yeah, if we, yeah, if we could, you'll all get your turn, so, yeah.
For what it's worth, I've never developed a timeshare community. I've never even attempted to develop a timeshare community. The same time, I would rather, if, if necessity happened, I, I don't want to tie our hands on some economic future that I can't see or understand yet. But our intention is just to do short-term rentals. We think that the market is here for that. And also, again, like you're well saying, this resort that's here in the middle, this, these pool amenities, I would probably expect, especially in the formative years, the first 10 years, it's half locals and half visitors. I think that's who you're going to see at this pool. You're on the lake all day, you're on the trail all day, come here, have a beer and watch the surfers. Have a pina colada, have a Sprite with your kids and watch these guys. Maybe you surf, maybe you don't.
Right, and before I open up to my colleagues that I'm sure have questions as well. You said one of your goals tonight is to kind of understand what it is that the city would be looking for. So the way that I look at it from all of these perspectives is that, that we want responsible growth that is going to enhance our community without negatively impacting our community or our neighbors. Like we're, we're not interested in that. So if we can't get past the neighborhood meeting where the neighbors are, are understanding and, and understand where we're coming from or what the development is going to do, how it's going to enhance them or what the benefits are for them, not interested because we, we have to coexist, all of us. So that's, that's from my perspective is that we're going to have responsible growth, that we're going to have partners in the development community partnering with neighborhoods where they can peacefully coexist. So that's again, just from my perspective to answer the question you had earlier. Any other council members have questions? Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, just a real quick question because I feel like I heard two different things. And I was hoping for some clarity. You mentioned hotel, you know, four star hotel kind of deal. And then you also mentioned Airbnb. And to me, those are two different things. Is this a Airbnb hotel or is this a, a resort with staff and security and front desk and, and all of those amenities of a hotel?
Yeah, it would have the front desk, front desk, would have laundry. The Airbnb line is getting a little blurred. I appreciate, by the way, your comments that I've seen online about, you know, what's kind of happening when people can't make the economic viability of an Airbnb, they're going to start putting those back on the market and then you're going to start seeing primary residents purchase them. So maybe that problem, as you well said, is going to be solved a little bit by, by nature's economic forces, right? But in our case, we expect to have laundry and the full service treatment there. But I say it's blurred because in Expedia now, you can start to book, you know, Verbo. I think Verbo got acquired by Expedia. So those lines are getting a little more blurred now, but the look and feel from the consumer perspective would be more like a hotel.
Yeah, Councilor Doyle?
Just my thoughts. I, I, great idea. I, I love the idea. My biggest concern is that it's changing multifamily into this. And for that reason, I'm against it because it's, we can't give up multifamily for this. But be careful what you ask for, you just may get it. It's 280 units right now, they could build that right now. And because of our wonderful Republican state of Arizona, which I'm a Republican, is for small local control, we don't have that. So those 280 units can become vacation rentals overnight. And it's basically the same thing, you just call it different and the state's totally fine with that. So that's my concern is, but like I said, I would hope that if that was the case, that of those 280 units, like I said, to me condos are the most useless thing Havasu can get right now because an out of towner is going to, going to buy it and own it. We need long-term rentals. We need, a summer visitor is not going to buy a one-year lease. Our families and working people here in Havasu, they need a rental. And homeownership, we can talk about that, but I mean, it's kind of, the prices are very expensive here in Havasu as they are everywhere else. And unless it's an actual rental, an apartment complex, and that's another thing too, at our level. We can't say that we can make this just apartment rentals. We can't do that. The state law says it kind of is what it is and our hands are tied, especially with vacation rentals. So like I said, I mean, I love the idea. I would love to see it, you know, there's a place right across the street from me. There's, there's a lot of places along the water that'd be awesome for this. But to give up the, the multifamily, I, like I said, I, so I would really hope, and like I said, I think you coming here and investing in our community. And I would really hope that, you know, we could work with you to build those apartments there because we definitely need them. And that's, you know, I think that's definitely our need. And I think we would love this too, if we could somehow find a spot to put it that's already zoned for this type of, of, of structure. But the one thing I've heard over the last six years is the residents, they don't like when we change this and it's zoned for that. And, you know, the fact that their views, you know, there are some for, for other views, but, you know, unless you own the lot right in front of your view, it can always change. And so like I said, this, you could see the picture with all those buildings up there may not be what the, what the neighbors want. But as of right now, they could literally build that right now without having, having to come before council to get pretty much any approval at all. But like I said, I just, I don't, I hope we're not being hard on you. I, I do appreciate you coming into our community and wanting to invest in our community. And I really hope that we can. And I really hope that we can continue to work with you because we really need affordable housing. And I think that's the main thing right now before this. So I, I, and I do really thank you for seeing the potential in Havasu, but for me, it's got to be the multifamily right now. So.
Yeah. I don't know if I'm allowed to respond.
Certainly, yeah.
I think, I think that's where, look, when you keep saying there's a need for it, that what I interpret that as there's an economic demand for it, right? If you have a shortage of that housing, multifamily is actually far more lucrative than what I'm talking about. That's a fact. So if it was just money I was concerned with, and I promise you, if it was just money I was concerned with folks, I wouldn't be a surf park developer. This is hard. This is very hard stuff to do, especially when you invent a wave. But I do it because that's the legacy I want to teach my kids and help other kids. That's why I'm doing this stuff. But those two buildings off there, that's how you can offset it. You have the infrastructure and everything. And maybe that's where you do the long-term rentals. I'm open. That phase is kind of a future phase. I'm open to having that. But you do have to have the resort component juxtapose that surfing thing. So I'm not, I'm not totally closed off to doing a hybrid. And that's when I, I, I hope I was honest and clear that that's future phase could be condos, maybe it's apartments, maybe we sell them off, you know, to be determined. And Mr. Mayor, respond to one of the comments, you talked about responsible growth. We did a survey and it was, it was short, but we, we sent it out to over 500 people in getting here. And the results were that we had 57 people, 57% of people supported this project. 17% were unsure and 24% were opposed. I have no doubt that many of my colleagues behind me are going to be opposed, the same folks who showed up the planning commission, and I'm sensitive to that. I understand why. If you're a neighbor of this, have you been sitting by this vacant property for the last 20 years or more? It makes sense why you'd be opposed to it. But I think this council has a duty to the entire city at large, and I hope that you wouldn't be blind, I'm sure you're not, to that fact that, that there's many people, the voiceless majority who isn't here tonight potentially, that would support this project. And so I think that is responsible growth and considering the people who aren't sitting here today.
Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, so when we were talking about the height, you were bringing up the topography, which means that all four corners of the lot is what you're saying. If we measured that all out and added your height variance to it, you're saying, is this correct? Staff that this, he could actually put 60-foot high buildings on here that were all commercial, I mean condos?
I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Question is, due to the topography, the way I know how to get a height vary, the height of a pad. You take the four corners of a lot, you multiply them together to get the height. Is because of the difference in the topography being 22 feet in one corner and 22 feet up here. Can, can staff come up and kind of explain how we'd come up with? How do you get that 60-foot out of a 30-foot? I understand exactly what you're talking about. Can you tell? But I would like the staff to try and explain that to everybody else. And before you do that, before you leave, I'd love for you to tell me, could you use, you know, our affluent is pretty good. The only complaints we get is it's a little salty. So could you possibly use affluent in this pool? That could we do some sort of filtration system if obviously this would be on the backs of getting it to you? I don't know if it would happen or not, but is it possible we could use affluent in your wave pool?
I'm so glad you asked that question because actually in Mesa, that's all we use.
Oh, thank goodness.
So we have
Good job.
A very expensive, I would say very state-of-the-art filtration system that has ozone. Our, our filtration is so robust that when you go to a pool, you actually have about one part per million of chlorine. So you get out kind of itchy eyes, kind of itchy skin. You don't know what it feels like to get out of a pool. You get out of our lagoon, you feel like you just jumped out of a lake. That's the idea.
Okay.
We don't want people to feel like they're burning eyes and all that stuff. So we have ozone. We have, what am I trying to say? Yeah. And the chlorine treatment on that. So yes, we can use affluent. We are using affluent at our other, at our other project. And it's just great. It's actually fully drinkable when it comes out of our, you say it's actually cleaner than even potentially city water.
I also checked into the staff. It wasn't a little, it was a while ago that we did a complete pavement improvement on Lake Havasu Avenue with some expansions, which were those mediums that most of us hate, but they did save people's lives. We do know that. Obviously you would have to put in more infrastructure with the streets, access roads. It sounds like you have changed some already. So what I'm getting at is I did find out that we're not dealing with the 50-year-old water pipes on Lake Havasu Avenue. We have updated, I think, six to eight years ago, all of that infrastructure, which makes me happier. Because as we know, when we, we build a big project, we're moving soil, we're moving pavement, we're shaking, we're vibrating. If this pipe down the street is 50 years old, I know what it looks like. That shaking, shimmering, we wouldn't expect you to do all that. But I sure wouldn't want the taxpayers to have to deal with breaks later on just due to construction. So we have come up with the fact that that, that water mains in, on Lake Havasu Avenue have been improved. I'm not sure about the rest of them, but those are things that I'm sure if we approve this tonight, you will have to work out with the staff. So I guess the question I want right now is if he was to just build this property right now, how many buildings would he be able to put in? Would he potentially be able to get that 60-foot height variance? Or is there more to this? Because it is, I mean, there's a lot here to process. Yeah.
Yeah, I guess if I could, and you invited staff, I'll take my quick stab at it. Wants to say it smarter. How, how the code works is that you take your, your highest point on the property and you say you have 30, is it 35 feet? 30 or 35 feet from there. And in our case, because we have 22 feet of fall, you can add those two things together and that becomes your highest thing. So maybe it's 57 feet. I, I was generalizing. I think I said 55 feet, but that's how you get your height. And it's a very unusual ordinance, to be honest. I've never seen one quite like that. Usually it's from topography, the top of slope and then you, you know, build up. But how this is written is it's one parcel of land, which ours is. You take that highest corner and then you can have 30 feet off of that, which means.
Right. And for the overall appearance of the neighborhood, what I was trying to bring up is if we actually worked with the topography of the property and maybe shorter, shorter units as you come down, it would look more appealing. And right now, what I'm concerned about is it's going to look kind of stark in the neighborhood because you got what, two or 30-foot high apartment complexes pretty much all around that area. And all of a sudden, we're going to have 52 feet. And that's what I think people are a little bit shocked by. I could be wrong. I've only started studying this since Thursday of last week. So of course I've been following it and hearing and all the social medias. And yes, I was one that was polled and I said, I don't know.
Yeah, 17%.
Okay. So again, I would like to ask the staff, would this be true that he could purchase this property without even coming in front of us today? And build that many, within the unit, the number of units per acre? Would he be able to go up 60 feet and build big square ugly buildings all around this neighborhood? Yes or no?
We would have to see more detailed plans because that was not contemplated with his application because he's asking for a PD with specific building pad to ceiling heights. But base, this is a similar situation to the Delta Drive hearing from last year where one foot above McCollough, you get to 30 feet on that and carried out over the whole site. The building got bigger as it went to the south and up to like 40 some feet. And that's what the neighbors were concerned about there. Same situation here. It's Bahama Avenue plus one foot at the northeast corner could be carried out. And now again, when I stated earlier to your question, 30 feet, that's the base RM. The, the way that they combined the lots, right now that additional height gain is only 18 feet because it's next to R1. They combined them all. It's now it's directly adjacent. So you add 18 to that height, that's the max that any of the buildings can be going to the west. And they will get taller as you go west to stay under that height limit. If the topography drops off 30 feet and they got 18 feet off, up the top, you got a 48-foot building.
Okay. So basically this image that we see right here, this is not very accurate per se, but you're saying it's dropping off. We are protecting those 18-foot backed up to residential, are we?
This, so the original plan, we had, I think, 13 parcels or 15 parcels originally, and we were told to consolidate them by staff.
Okay.
We did. So the small footnote that is being referenced here is a footnote to the land use plan that you guys have. But we were told, and I have emails from, I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus here, but we were said, no, we do have up to, I want to say that that 22 feet plus the 30 or 35, whatever that number was. So all we'd have to do technically to do this is just re-subdivide it like it was, or undo the consolidation that we did before. Because then you have a buffer. You just put one parcel between you, us and our neighbor, and then you don't have that 18-foot problem.
How are you gonna, are you going to wall this preliminary, the primary, I mean, the outside, the outside walls? That's the word. Or are you going to have massive retaining going on here?
Well, almost neither. We've, we've done our best to engineer it so that we flow with the topography of the property. So if you look here in the upper right-hand corner, sort of have a valley here. So there's actually a pretty natural buffer between us and the neighboring properties. And so we tried to take advantage of that slope the best that we could.
Okay. And I wish I would have seen a more, a topo and a, a better, but that's not what you're here to do today. I love the affluent situation. I love the design. I love the spaces between it. I love the fact that there could be a lot more traffic on that road and there's nothing we can do about it based on what you talked about. So I, I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing the people. So here we go.
Yeah. And one more, if you want to nerd out with me on water really quick, our big development, which has a big lagoon, a big traveling lagoon wave, we consume less water than one hole of a golf course, just to give you perspective. And that's much more surfing assets, much more surface area. This, this will be miniscule in the water use. It's a fully closed system. So you're only talking about evaporation off frankly, very deep pools. That traveling wave is a 17-foot deep pool. The cliff diving pool is at least 16 feet deep and deep means low, little evaporation. And then you have the beach area. So we're very water conscious. I know it's a natural criticism of, of surf park developers, aren't many of us, but we are very considerate to that. And we're going to do our best to work with the city to minimize the water consumption.
And I won't be a yes if we're using potable wire, water. I just won't. So hopefully we can get that figured out.
Yeah. And I have to know the chemical makeup of your affluent if it's different, but I'm just saying generally speaking, we have an issue with that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell, they, based on the RM zoning, it's 20 units, density is 20 units per acre. So in the 14.08, 08 acres, it's 280 units or so. That could be built with that zoning. Again, as Mr. Gower said, all, that hasn't been evaluated, that type of a plan, but that's what would be allowable by code on density. I don't have that based on the topography, but just based on units, 280. Yeah. Councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You actually asked a lot of the questions I was going to ask, so I will try not to repeat myself. But I have very serious concerns here. So I'm going to have a couple of questions for you. One, you know, what was it? Nine months ago, I believe is when you first started this project? Somewhere in that neighborhood, six, nine months before, when you first brought it to the city?
Maybe two years. I don't know. I think it's been two years since we.
Has it been that long?
Yeah.
Flies after a while. I've been watching this project since you first brought it. City manager showed me some pictures and says, what do you think of this? I said, wow, that's, that's a really nice project. That would be a great thing for the city. And then he showed me where it was. And I thought, great project for the city somewhere else. Not right there. No. Quiet, please. I'm going to talk here, but I can't talk if you guys are going to interrupt. So with that said, I thought, you know, it'd be great for somewhere else, but let's, let's keep an eye on it and let's see what happens. And then I watched your planning and zoning commission meetings. And at the end of that meeting, and I believe it was you that said, well, I guess Havasu isn't open for business. And that just turned me off. It was like, you know what? We are open for business. But you haven't told us what business you're doing. You said a surf park, short-term rentals, long-term rentals, resort style. We are open for business and, but the way we do business is if you have a product and you come to us and you tell us what that product is, we talk to our constituents here. You like that word, right? Constituents? So we talked to the people here in, in the city and we say, you know, what do you guys think? And then they tell us what they think and we move forward from there. The way this seems to be working is you're telling us what it is that you're going to do and expect us to just follow through without a plan. And I don't like that. You said that you've heard what the people have had to say, but I don't think you're really listening to what they have to say. This project, you, you've toned it down a little bit. You never went back to a public hearing to get their opinion on that. You're not required to. But to work with the neighbors there, wouldn't it have been a good practice to go and talk to them and say, hey, you know what? We're listening. What do you think? Let's change this. And, but you didn't do that. You talked about them, the economic impact and the economic impact is extremely important to our city. But that's only one of the facets here in the city. The other is quality of life. And putting things in the appropriate place, the mayor talked about this a little bit, where we need to have things and responsible growth and things put where they need to be. Right there, I don't think it's, it's true. You kind of come across, and I'm not trying to be rude here, as a snake oil salesman, to be quite honest with you. You're showing us pictures of a thing in Texas, but that's not what you're building here. You're showing us this surf thing, but that's not what you're building here. So why are you showing it to us? Show us what it is that you're going to build here, not what you're going to build in other places. It's almost like a bait and switch type of a thing and that turned me off as well. You also made the comment here about you want to know now, if it's not going to be good, you're just going to leave the city and, and that's not what you want to do. You want to build here, but you want to know now. That's fine. If it was me and I was hiring you as a contractor, I'll be quite honest with you, just based on the way you've spoke with our public. I wouldn't hire you myself, but I'm not here to hire you. I'm here to do what's best for the city. You talk about the people that are supporting the project. I don't know that I can trust the people that you're going to have come forward if you are. I received a phone call at home today from somebody saying, who's this guy that's trying to bribe people to come to the city council meeting by offering them a punch pass? I got a flyer that says right on it, it was sent to me. And it's a punch pass saying, hey, if you will come to the city council meeting and show support, we will give you a punch pass. Well, I hate to tell you this, but if it doesn't pass, there's no punch pass. So I'm not sure why you feel that you had to entice people to come here. Was it because you thought everybody else was going to talk against it? That could very well be. I've had people say they don't want this project here. They would like to see it somewhere else in, in the city. I'd like to see it somewhere else in the city. Whether or not you're the, the appropriate person to do that, I don't know. But I will tell you, my vote tonight is a hard no. And there's really nothing you're going to be able to say to change my mind on that. So.
May I at least defend my character?
Pardon?
May I at least defend my character?
Absolutely.
All right. Thank you, councilman. I appreciate your concerns. On the neighborhood meeting issue, we were required, I think, to have, was it two neighborhood meetings that we had? So we did notice per statute, the neighbors around us. We had, we hosted two meetings over there at the nomadic place where I just was actually. And then I was, we were encouraged to say, hey, take to heart what the planning commissioners have told you and what the stat, what the members of the public have said. And we did that. We reduced two entire buildings. I mean, most developers, they want to cram as much density as they can into every square foot of a property. They're looking at that third thing. So for us to go not from the third picture, but to that upper right picture is a dramatic departure from what we're legally entitled to do. And I did not, and I will refute it. And you have the video. I'd love to hear you play it. And the planning commission, I did not say you were not open for business. What I said was, I hope that the promise I was given when I walked in the city is that you are open for business and you're open to this idea. And if you're not, yes, I would like to know sooner than later because life's short, folks. If you don't want me here, again, I'm not going to fight with you for the next five years. I'm not, and I didn't say I would leave the city. What I said is we'll change our plan and maybe we'll do the bottom picture. Maybe we'll do storage units. I don't know. I haven't explored what the other uses of this property are besides the density. If you don't want this project here, I'm, I'm not trying to be pushy other than time is short and I value every minute of my life. And I don't want to spend it for the next three years being tabled and modified and whatever. If you say, Mr. Cannon, we're, we're okay with four of the buildings, but not five, that's feedback I'm happy to take. But we've tried our best to incorporate balancing the economic interests that we have as a private sector, right? We have to look at making money ultimately, or this thing doesn't make any sense. We can't build it and we can't have surfing for anybody. So we did our best. I, I, if my presentation is communicated, I'm a snake oil salesperson. I'm sorry that I've communicated that message to you. I don't think, I think I've been full of integrity. I, I don't know of any other property that's big enough to host this property in the whole city of Lake Havasu. I searched originally, maybe I missed it, or maybe some new property has opened up. But at that time, this 14-acre parcel was the largest single contiguous piece of property I could find in the entire city. If you have some by beachfront, the city has an RDA or city-owned property, you want to contribute under some development agreement, I'd be happy to entertain that. But this was the only one I could find. And with all due respect, the city is the one that promised me. The city promised me density of two, 20 units per acre. 280 units on this 14-acre parcel. I bought what the city sold, Mr. Councilmember. And so I'm in here asking for a lot less than that. And I'm being the one accused of asking you guys, I'm selling you snake oil. I take issue with that. And I also don't think that property rights should always, with all candid respect, should always be a democratic process. If this is a conservative city, with all due respect, private property rights are inalienable. And when we buy properties, we hope we can rely on our city and its land use ordinance and its zoning code to give us the things that we want. And if every single time we put it to a majority vote of those around the property, nothing's ever going to get done in this world. I've done enough developing and that's why I'm asking you to look beyond those who are just in this room. And I'm not casting spurs on this, I'm happy to talk to anybody in this room. I'm well, I'd love to talk to anybody after this meeting. Happy to do it. I'm not hiding from anybody. I had two committee meetings and a planning commission meeting and we got shot down by one vote, four to three. Wasn't too far off base. So if, if, if there's something we can do to accommodate, great. But if the city just. great. But if the city just really doesn't like this, we'll change the plan. But right now, I'm not asking for density that's not entitled, that was promised to me by your city. If you don't want to honor that, I'm not the one selling snake oil.
Mayor, can we request an executive order to find out about legal on this? I have some concerns.
Sure. Yeah. Do you want a motion to go into executive session?
I would like to do a motion to go into executive sessions to discuss legal.
Okay. Do we want to see if any other councilmembers have questions first, and then before we open the public hearing or after the public hearing, at least we have the full docket before we get legal advice, if we have some things. So do you mind waiting a few minutes and we can do that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Councilmember Lynn?
Hi.
Hi.
I think it's really fun. I, as a businessperson, you had on there average night rooms like $348 a night, I think, on there. Are you planning on this being open year-round?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any other areas, and I don't know if this is even a question we can answer, that this type of project could be done here in Havasu that doesn't need a major general plan amendment? Would we know that?
You know, the challenge is, I know it's always good for us, and it's a slippery slope for us to be like, oh, we love a project, but not here. Or we want it somewhere else. I mean, it's a really slippery place to be. The facts of the matter is, this gentleman owns this property. He doesn't own any of their property necessarily for this. So--
I'm just curious.
This is a planned development, so this would be very specific to the, this isn't a rezone request necessarily that is meeting a rezone of our code without a planned development on top of it.
Is there a reason why you chose this specific location?
It was the largest contiguous parcel I could find in Havasu City. It was the largest, it was the only one big enough that I could find. Now, again, maybe I missed something and there was something, but I couldn't find actually anything over four acres.
You understood when you purchased it that you were going to have to come in front of us for a major amendment?
Actually, I did not know that, because the zoning permits me to do 280 units. So just to be clear, one of the requests here today, there's one for height, and the other is that I can be open to the public. Whereas I could actually build this surf feature and have the cliff diving and all this stuff, no different than any of the hotels you have a pool. I just have a bigger pool. So I could build all of this stuff without coming into the commission, but I want it to be open to the public. The height--
Yeah, there's actually, there's two different public hearings we have tonight. So this is the general plan, major general plan amendment. So this allows, as Mr. Cannon said, the ability for public use and for, there's a PD, so it's the specific building heights. And Mr. Gilbert, please jump in to give more specifics on that. And then there's that companion item. Should this item pass, the major general plan amendment that we're considering in this hearing right now, which has to be done by a supermajority, so at least five members of this council have to vote in favor of that, we then would hear the next companion item, which is the zoning case. And the zoning case would then allow the underlying zoning to match the general plan, the change of the general plan, should that occur. So, but Mr. Gilbert, what else is the major general plan addressing?
That's basically it. Our general plan's the guide for the city, and to rezone property has to be in conformance of the general plan, requiring the amendment. So if the amendment doesn't pass, then the, what he's requesting would not fit what the current general plan category is underlying the property. As simple as that.
You agree, Mr. Gilbert, that I would. I could still build, like, the pools and the cliff diving and the surf. It just wouldn't be open to the public, because--
As an RM development, you could, yes. With the development criteria that apply to RM developments, yes, that would be true.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Just to clarify, we can put a hotel in an RM. You called it a hotel. So we can put it, I don't have the map, I have the map, I don't have the actual uses, but we can build a hotel in mixed family?
Yeah. Mr. Gilbert's--
We would build, you could build condos in that. You could just Airbnb as the sole owner of all the condos.
Technically a business, but the state allows it to be a business. You can't put a hotel in.
Well--
Hotel, it can't be--
No hotels.
It has to be mixed. That's why my question is, is if it's--
Yeah. Mr. Gilbert said, no hotels in the RM district, but it could be up to 280 condos based on the 20 units per acre density allowed in the RM district, at which you could then sell on the platforms in a hotel-like environment.
So it'd have the same effect. We actually thought going a step further and having our own onsite security, having laundry service would be a better result for the committee. But yeah, we can still rent them out, short-term rentals, and be part of your 400% increase. But yeah, nothing stops that, I guess.
Are there any other questions for members of the council at this time? Do you want to hear from the public, and then we can go into executive session?
I think I'd like some quick clarity on a legal advice prior to hearing the public. I do, I just want to be able to understand--
Make a motion. Yeah, that's fine.
So I motion to go into executive session for legal purposes.
Second.
All right. We have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a motion, second from Vice Mayor Moses. We are adjourning to executive session. For all of you still here, please stay. It'll be just a couple of minutes or more, depending on what the conversation is, and then we'll be back and resume the meeting. So--
You, am I going to be coming back up, do you think? What do you want me to do?
Yeah, you can have a seat.
We'll seat my seat up. Yeah.
All right. We'll now reconvene back into our regular meeting. We are on item 7.3. We just returned from executive session to get some legal advice. Are there any additional questions, comments from members of the council before we open the public hearing? All right. This is a public hearing. You don't have to sign up for the public hearing. So yeah, you can sit down, Mr. Cannon.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. You don't have to sign up for the public hearing, but we did have several that did. So we'll go in the order that they signed up. And then afterwards, if there's anyone additional that would like to speak on this item, you're more than welcome to make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Again, please make your comments directly to the council. There will be a council, there will be a timer on the screens around the room. They will count down when your time is up. Please be respectful and end your comments at that point. We'll start with Mr. Dave Windhammer on this item. You don't want to, you don't want to start with your comments? Okay, we'll go next then to Mr. John Lawson.
John Lawson, L-A-W-S-O-N, Mr. Mayor and Council. Is there any way that you can put up the map that shows Bahama Road? I don't have the ability to do that.
Yes, it's coming up now.
Okay, there you go. Yeah.
This one or the one that we had--
No, this is, this is fine.
Okay.
Okay. If you look, let's see, it's my left, the big curve in the road. There are, is an apartment or a condo complex there. It's called Grand Bahamas. I happen to live in there. That curve is dangerous. It's posted at 20 miles an hour, both ways. The whole street of Bahama Avenue is posted 25. So traffic is a big issue. It has been an issue since the first meeting. It became an issue at, when they had just a neighborhood meeting over at one of the other commercial buildings here in town, way before it came to the city. So that becomes an issue. The other issue is, with that curve, if you notice, there's a drive that goes out right at, right in the middle of that curve. That's the back road to our complex. In their new proposal, I think, if I saw it, no, I didn't, they changed it because they put parking down in there. But they're going to bring traffic up Bahama and down Bahama. They're talking about that it's going to be redirected down at Lake Havasu Avenue to only be a right-hand turn and that type of thing. I don't get it. The traffic report, I have a neighbor who's a, was a California Highway Patrol. He got it, the whole printout. He can't be here. He had a surgical procedure. So I told him I would mention something. This impacts traffic study, in his opinion, and after I looked through it, I think it's flawed. And here's the reason why, is because it has statistical numbers of traffic flow. This traffic study was done three days after Labor Day last year. That's when the town basically empties out with all the people for the summer. So the traffic study, I don't think shows the full potential of what the traffic really is. So for that reason, I put that in question, and I do that on behalf of my neighbor. The other thing is, is that they went from five-story to four-story, okay? And they eliminated a building. We still have an issue of how high this building's going to be. They don't need to build a perimeter wall down there by Grand Bahamas. If you look, there's a building down there. It's going to be blocking any view that those condos right there would It was brought up by Councilmember Campbell, that with the change that is trying to be made, you thought that maybe it should go back to planning and zoning. I would say it probably does too. Okay? Whether or not that's going to happen, I don't know. That's up to you. Whether or not it's a timeshare hotel, yeah, I brought up that question at the pre-city meetings that they had over there. What's this going to be? He could build it, and I understand why he wants to build it. I get it. It's business, okay? But I don't think it belongs there. The height of those buildings is just going to be an obstruction for anybody that's lived there for the last five to 10 years, 20 years, up to the south of it and everything. They're just going to be an obstruction. So I think, kind of covered what I wanted to do. But the one thing I had a question about, you're talking about if he doesn't get this project, he can build 220 units or 280 units. Oh, I'm all done?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Okay.
Thank you for your comments.
Yeah.
The next speaker is Ms. Katrine Phillips. And the traffic study is available on the city's website under this agenda item. And they, in anticipation of the questions from planning and zoning, they increased by 15% based on comments that citizens had mentioned.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, public. I'll try to keep as short as pretty much all the issues addressed in all the previous meetings. I would concern not even remotely fixed with this new design. I'd say we continue to try and put a square peg in a round hole. The project is not fit for this location, in close proximity to residential neighborhood, by the way, nor possibly a fit for us as a city. But again, it's not a case of not in my backyard. It's a question. The redesign, quite honestly, is putting lipstick on the proverbial, you know what. It does not address, it may have partly addressed now, as we have a change in game here, water consumption. Arizona is in a long-term drought. Our neighbor Nevada has banned outdoor water features and pools for drought mitigation. That's for Las Vegas, who stands to gain way more out of a fountain than we do out of a water park. I'm not necessarily talking about the pool. I'm talking about water usage by residents. We all know we shower more when we're on vacation. We might take two showers a day. So that's a concern. Noise and light pollution. I will not repeat numerous concerns previously voiced, but the fact stands, the project will have an extremely negative impact on our dark-skies city, as advertised on our very own GoLakeHavasu.com. For a visual of the negative impact, I defer to the nighttime image of the sister project in Mesa, Cannon Beach, submitted at previous planning committee meetings. I'll leave it with you. The Mesa project, by the way, is in an entirely industrial area. It is surrounded by warehouses, storage units. There is no resident nearby. I encourage you to have a look at that. Traffic, I'll leave it for others to elaborate. Workforce, housing, medical, again, I defer to previous meeting notes. Allow me to leave you with this terminology. External economic obsolescence. Economic obsolescence is the decrease in a property's value due to factors external to the property owner itself. Typically, these factors lie outside of the control of a property owner. While one can modify strategy or take steps to mitigate future losses, it cannot usually fix the specific cause of devaluation. I consider this a serious factor for economic obsolescence of our personal property, and I would encourage any neighbor on Bemini, Bahama, Biscayne, Spirit, to look into that and see the fiscal impact on their own personal property due to this. Thank you for your kind consideration of citizens and taxpayer concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Mr. Ron Phillips.
Be a little shorter than my wife, I hope. Okay, I just like to do things in a bullet style. We've already talked about water and lights. One of the things we missed on was the workforce. Where are we going to get the people to operate all this equipment? Traffic, the gentleman talked about the curve and everything. That's one issue. If you want to look at the corner down there, people are going to be coming up there with their side-by-sides, their boats and everything else. That's going to be a real issue. It's going to be coming in every holiday and every busy event for these hotels and resorts. Noise for the current residents, we're talking, he was originally, this is my fourth meeting, he, this is, he talked about different phases of construction. So this was going to go on for one or two, possibly longer, years in doing those things. They also are not sure what they're going to do. Again, you kind of couldn't narrow them down today, whether he was going to sell them, rent them, timeshare them. He was all over the, you know, the sidewalk, all over, everything that's going on there. It sounds just like the London Bridge Resort, which we already have. So you can compare and contrast the issues that we're going to have, because they have restaurants and bars and everything else down there. The only thing he doesn't have is, he doesn't have the channel going right through there. He doesn't have the location. Last, our new bridge is going to be coming in soon, and that's going to be coming right through, right up Palo Verde, right there, which is just a few blocks down from Bahama. So again, impact with the traffic and the signs and everything else. And I'm with Mr. Lane over there, Councilman Lane. My first meeting we had with the company in January, we kind of jumped on him, beat him up a little bit. And he came out and we weren't open for business, but no, he owns the property and he's going to build whatever he wants. That's what he told us. So he was doing it out of the graciousness of his heart to have that meeting in January. So along with Councilman Lane, I'm a hard no, and I'm not for this project. I guess that means I don't get my 10 free passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. The next speaker is Martin Stansbury.
City councils, my name is Martin Stansbury, 23-year resident of Lake Havasu. I'm a developer, a property manager, a broker, an employer, and a property owner here. I own nine units at 1810 Bemini Lane that will be directly impacted by this project. One of the reasons why this room is so excited is because of the government jibber-jabber. Councilman Campbell asked a very easy question. Can he build over-- asked a very easy question, can he build over five stories there now, and did not get an answer. That's what a developer and the public gets when we go to the counter. It's a very easy calculation, and you can. If the room knew this, I think the things would change. It can be five stories right now. And no matter what's proposed in this 14 acres, you're going to have resistance. It's been a vacant lot for 20 years. People are used to that. If you build 288 units, if you build duplexes, condos, tiny houses, storage condos, you're going to have resistance. There's no doubt. It's not in my backyard. I originally was neutral on the project. I wasn't sure if I was for it or against it. But the more that I've looked at it, and I've been on the property that's being proposed, I hope you have also, so you can realize that across one street is storage condos, which is not going to be affected. Downhill is multi, I think, three or four unit story condos, which their view is to the lake. Behind it is a pretty good-sized wash, which makes a nice buffer. I don't know what the location has that somewhere else wouldn't have. I mean, it seems like a pretty good location there. It's going to have less impact than lots of places in town. Also, there's a big uproar about Airbnbs in this town. It stands to make sense to put them all in a central location. We have noise ordinances right now that the police can enforce. We don't need more ordinances. We have light ordinances. We have traffic ordinances. No matter what's built in that property, we have an issue with that intersection at Lake Havasu Avenue and Bahama. It's not going to change. But if we put 280 units there, four-story buildings, and not enough parking, because you guys love to let them build them without not enough parking, it's going to be a problem with a lot more traffic. Councilman Dolan, you said that you're not okay with putting this type of projects on multiple-unit properties. Then why are, because we need the multiple units. Then why are we letting single-family homes be built on multiple-unit properties? It doesn't make sense to me. I hope that the council people have had a chance to visit the property. There's a question about the dead man's curve. That's not going to go away. I don't care what's built there. If it's 280 units or tiny houses or nothing, it's still going to be the dead man's curve. And right now, I believe, by the way, I'm not being paid to be here. I believe that he could build 280 condos right now, the lower end of the property, definitely five stories. He could own them all himself and do exactly what he wants to do and run them as a single-management company, as Airbnbs. So I support the project. I wish that the city would be a little more helpful on their straightforward answers. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Whithammer, do you have?
My name is Dave Wiijnhamer, W-I-J-N, as in Nancy, H-A-M as in Mary, E-R. I've heard a lot of stories today on a lot of different things, which has kind of boggled my mind. That's why I wasn't ready to go first, because I wasn't first in the pool. But anyways, talking about a lot of things, yes. I mean, I'm one of the residents on Rainbow Avenue North. I really worried about the height structure, and really, tonight, I haven't figured out if it's going to be four stories, five stories, six stories. But yet again, when is it going to stop? I thought we were basically staying like two to three stories. But yet again, we had the Holiday Inn that went to four, and now we're going into five, we're going to six. When is that going to stop in the city? I mean, we just keep on growing. Is it just going to be, keep on escalating and escalating, is what I'm wondering. Right now, I mean, I heard him say five to four stories. I've heard from other people that it's six to five stories. So there's just too much jumble around that I can't understand what we're actually doing. I like the project. I don't like the area that it's going to be put in. I'm a bus driver for junior high. I've actually asked the kids on my bus, would they like something like this? And yes, they would, okay? But here's a question. You know, a lot of the people who can't afford it are low-income. Never said, because we did get a, you know, whoever attended got a free token pass or whatever you want to call it, what is the price for admission for the kids of the community go to? How much will that actually cost? And can they afford to go to it? You know, and when it comes to winter time, can they actually, you know, want to get into a pool? Is it going to be a heated pool? Like she showed in the picture, that's a 34-acre project that they did out there in Canyon, Canyon something, Canyon Beach. Thank you. And having the wave pool that they're putting in here is not as elaborate as that one, that you can tube into the wave and everything else. So to me, there's a lot of stuff that's just jumbled and jurgled on this thing that I don't like. Am I up in the air? I'm still kind of a no on this situation. Also, too, is Ms. Campbell, you always talked about the sewage, on how our sewage is in this town, and what will that affect on this project also? Will it handle it? We talked about water will handle it, because we just redid the ones on Lake Havasu Avenue. Well, what about the sewage? Will it handle the sewage of all those units and the use of it being done in summertime, when it's going to be the most busiest? That's when we'll see it the most being used. And I thank you for your parts in all this, too. You know, I didn't like the part where, you know, is if you show up here, you will get a free Use Punch ticket pass. I agree with you, Mr. Lane. Thank you for bringing that up. And the other part is, too, is when he keeps on talking about, well, down the road, we're going to do this or that, this or that, rent and everything else. And that's the part that I don't like, wishy-washiness in. And I would be a no as of this part unless something changed. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I do think today it was clarified that it was originally five-story buildings going to four-story buildings. So that was clarified today, just to clear that up. The next speaker, Mr. Gregory Maury.
Hi. Excuse me, this is my first time, so, but I was not paid to be here, just so everybody knows. I've been here 20 years, since I was a kid. I own a business in town. I have two boys. I think this project would be really great, not only just because I think the newer generation, not offense to anybody out here, I just think that being progressive and, you know, everybody's against change, but I think change is going to happen regardless of what is going on. Like the other gentleman said, you know, dead man's curve is going to be there regardless. I hear people talking about, not in my backyard. I totally respect everybody's views on that. But I feel like Havasu is a town where, you know, people come to visit because there's so many different things about it that they enjoy. And I think this would be one of those things that they could come and be like, hey, this is what's new and different that would bring the community together. I work with Airbnbs and things like that. And like the other gentleman was saying, with noise ordinance and all that, there's always, you know, issues with that as far as complaints from neighbors and things like that. I think having a centralized just area where, you know, if you wanted to rent it as like an Airbnb sort of thing, would be great for this community, because you wouldn't have as many of those issues going on throughout the neighborhood, which would open up properties for people who are interested in buying homes. Because I do hear a lot of complaints about people, oh, everything's Airbnb. Well, if you have something like this, where, you know, you're able to sell those to people that want to rent them in a fun area, would open up homes, not only for that, and it would also open up business for people who need work, like lower income. And I think everybody's misconstruing the fact that, oh, you have to pay for the resort. They're trying to open up to public, from my understanding, which is great, because my youngest son loves water parks. But there's not, I don't see where the difference is from here, like the nautical, which I think is more centralized to adults. Or, you know, there's basically just the aquatic center, which is, it's really hard to enjoy it when there's, you know, 100-plus people there or so, you know. I think something like this would interested, interest not just younger generation, but if people were open to it, would also bring a lot more, you know, just people together. So I think that's just my thoughts on it, and I hope you guys take my views. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Nathan Medina, or Medea.
Hello there. My name's Nathan. I'm in the construction here. I've lived in this city since I was three. Grew up, went to elementary, middle, high school. And the city is where, as far as I've been in all my 31 years, I never even thought of actually doing it anywhere else, was to raise my family in this city. So that's, and back then, the main things that, if you were a kid, you would go to the aquatic center, the movie theater, or the roller rink. And, you know, now, the movie theater and the aquatic center are the only ones left. And there are really like iconic things to this city that, as a kid growing up, you wouldn't have missed. You would know what these places are. And for like seeing in the future of what this could mean to this city to me, because I live right in this area, so it's going to be right in my backyard. I live off College Road. And, you know, it's a place that would offer my son a place to work. When he's eight years old now, he's going to be growing up here. And I don't want him to, you know, I want him to see and understand that this is how special this city is, because he might want to go and explore other places. But this city has so much shop with watercraft and sports that not really, some residents can all afford to enjoy. And that's why I think this brings the opportunity to allow the, like, maybe people at another margin of budget to experience these in this city and to control them, space, environment, and anytime, if it's like that such-so way, to the public, I mean, available to them. And so that kind of makes me really excited. And that's the only reason why I'm here the first time to speak, because I feel like this is something important for me individually as a taxpayer of the city that could really help me and my family, that I would really enjoy seeing happening. And so that's why I just wanted to pitch my point and hope, and I understand Leo, the bureaucracy stuff, to you guys, that's your guys' job. I just wanted to be a voice that this could be something super wonderful to develop on a home sense basis, body format, I guess, for my family individually. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker is Rose Villasquez.
Hi. This is the first time I speak out like this. But I just want to say I really like this project. I really do, because it's something different, something new, something that people could enjoy Havasu. I've been here 25 years. I have two children, and I raised here. And they, while they were growing up, why did we move here? There's nothing for us to do here. So I tell them, we have no choice but to live here, okay? I think this project would be good for a lot of kids, especially when they're teenagers and summer comes and there's nothing for them to do or to go. And they stay home and play games or go skateboarding and things like that. But I really believe that this project will help kids to come together. Family comes together, because this is supposed to be a place for families. And if you have children, you want to enjoy that time with your family. You want to be with your family. You want your children to see them, to have a good time and have fun. My daughter graduated, and she left Havasu, and I told her, why are you leaving Havasu? She said, Mom, if I have children, there's nothing here for them. We didn't have anything here either. We only had the aquatic center, the movies, and bowling. That's all we had. And I told, I told her, you're right. You're absolutely right. And she lives in Ohio. My granddaughter came, and she said, Nana, what are we going to do? I said, sweetheart, we could go to the aquatic center. Oh, yeah, that's fine. Mom said about the aquatic center, you know? So I think this project would be good for kids and for teenagers, to get them out of the street, okay, to do something together, to do something together with the family, you know? I like this town, but technically, for me, this town is for more for adults, things to do. I don't go to the lake. I don't have a boat. I don't have a seadoo. I don't have toys. So I worked and worked for 17 years here, you know? And I don't go to other places either that they have here. It doesn't offer me anything, but I lived here, I invested here, and I pay taxes. So my taxes go to all this. And if my tax is going to go for this project, I approve. I like this project. I was excited. Something new, something different, something to enjoy while I'm still living in this earth. So thank you for listening to me. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comments. And just so we're clear, your tax dollars won't be going to this project. This is a private development. Looking for a land use change.
That made me nervous.
Yes. All right, that concludes speakers that have signed up to speak on this item. But if anyone else, like, I'm sorry, I don't have, but please, well, make your way to the podium, state your name and...
Thank you. I tell you, you conducted a very good meeting here.
Thank you.
I just have a couple of questions to ask the people that you hired that weren't voted, like the city manager, the city attorney.
Yes, sir. So your comments are directed to the council, so you could face me and then also state your name.
Okay. My name is L.A.D.E.W.I.G.
Okay, great. So, yeah, whatever your question or comment is on this item.
What credentials does the city manager have to run what he's doing? Where did he get his knowledge from?
So we're talking about a land use action. So any questions on that, we'll answer it. Afterwards, you can talk to Mr. Kunitz.
Or whatever.
Yeah, so...
You know, you're real cocky, you know that?
Sir, yeah, please. Yeah, we have decorum. We talked about this at the beginning. So if you have questions...
No, I asked him a question earlier that I knew the answer, and...
Yeah, so if you...
He bullshitted. And I wanted to ask the attorney, what does she do? Does she oversee...
Sir, you can ask us the questions. I'm going to give you one last opportunity to do that before we'll bring on the next speaker. So please make your comments.
Okay. City attorney, what is her function?
She, yeah, she is the attorney for us, but sir, that has nothing to do with this question or this topic in front of us. So any questions you have in the direction...
Does she oversee transitions of people selling property to make sure they don't own taxes or anything?
No, no. Sir, afterwards, I can go over their job descriptions with you if you'd like. But if you have any questions specific to this land use item, we're happy to answer those.
No, it's quite clear.
All right. Well, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Yeah, would anyone else like...
I'll tell you, I...
Thank you, sir. Yeah, the next person, yeah, just please make your way to this podium, state your name for the record. At this point, it's open to anyone that would like to address us for the first time.
My name's Emiliano Torres. I'm a resident and live nowhere close to this development. Thank you, Mr. Lane, for your characterization, because that's the same feel I have. I've been to a few of these meetings, and it appears this development is going to be open to the public. And I can just imagine the hundreds of kids from the local high school being there every afternoon. Is that going to be free to the public? Is it going to be admission? How are you going to limit all the kids that want to go to this water park that's open to the public? It's never really been addressed. It seems like it's public when it's private, but it's private when it's public. I'm very confused. That's why I don't like this proposal. And if you look at the drawing, or the drawing, this is a boating community. There's no parking for boats up here. You can't get a trailer in that parking lot. So what you're going to have is all the folks come in on the weekend with their boat, they're going to be parking on the street, because that's where I park, because I can just come in, park on the street. Because every one of those lots, every one of those spots is a single spot with no reserves for boats or side-by-sides, no trailer parking. You're going to have an issue on the street with people parking there with trailers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, please, just keep making your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Hi, council and mayor. My name is Cindy Ritter. My concerns are, we've had so many businesses here in Havasu that have had to close their doors, that have been here for many years, because they can't find people to work. How are we going to staff this new hotel or resort, whatever, whatever they end up calling it? How are we going to staff that when our family-owned businesses and businesses that have been here for years and years had to close their doors? The water. Yes, I know, we have allotted water for, I believe it's 100,000 people. What happens when there is no water? We're in a, you know, severe drought. So having something like this built, and yes, I understand that they can build all these apartments there, and they're going to use water, but those are my concerns. And open to the public, that's great. And I'm all for our kids having a place to go. And I'm all for our kids having a place to go and have something for them to do that's different and safe for them. But our families here with kids are struggling. Who's going to be able to afford to send their one, two, maybe four kids to this water park? So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yeah, please.
My name is Sheila Murphy, and I just have an observation. We have several hotels that are here. He's wanting to build a hotel resort. How many people are going to be working at that resort? Where are those people going to live? I remember a year ago, if you, some of you, I was up here talking about this specific lot that because we're building a three story, five story, four story on Delta. And I made this, I said, this is a perfect lot, and there's several others. We don't have to change any of the codes or whatever to have proper housing for the people. I don't know where the people are going to live, I mean, the people are going to live, they're going to be working at this place. It is definitely at $345 a night? Who are the residents going to be able to go there? If you go to any of the parks that are here in all the other areas, the local people here can't afford even to use those facilities. So we talk about, oh, it's a nice place. We have this, we have that. It would be a great idea. I think it's an absolutely fantastic idea. I really want that to come in. But I don't see how the chart, the prices that he's going to charge, it's really going to fit in this area. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, please.
Hi, my name's Eddie Katz, 24 year resident of Lake Havasu City, Arizona. My wife and I own a business here. Our son was born and raised here. I got extensive experience in the surfing and skateboarding industry. And all I can tell you is that I heard three young, two young men and one woman with some optimism walk in here and basically tell it like it is. You talk to any young kid, any young person, they're going to tell you, you know, they have to drive to Las Vegas or they have to drive to Phoenix or Flagstaff or they got to drive to Palm Springs to do other things that we don't have here. If you let a project like this that's knocking on your door, if you let this project go, you'll, this council will be sorry they let it go. This is something that would be just phenomenal for the youth of this town. It's another option. I think it was Mr. Cannon gave a great presentation. I understood the whole thing. I heard some negativity over here and I talked to him and I heard what I heard. The land area is perfect. The project's really good. You guys just need to work with the builder and hit some bullet points so it fits what this council and you people want.
Mr. Katz, you have to address the council, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So anyways, yeah, I mean, the concerns here are, look at what he said. He showed a video, surf PE. I mean, that's another option. I mean, I mean, I guess, I don't know if you guys know what surf PE means, but what you do is the high school would be able to come down and have a surf class instead of weightlifting or whatever else they do, you know, football, whatever. They can go down, surf for 30 minutes to an hour and then get back to class. It's called surf PE. I'm a product of that. I went to Sandy Uta High School in Encino, California. We had surf PE in the morning. We went back to school. We would have competitions with Huntington Beach High School championships. It was a great way, a great thing. And so, I mean, a diving platform, we don't have one, you know? And when people come into this town from out of town, this is a tourist town. This is not an industrial based town. When people come in to visit, they always say, what is there to do here? Well, those are two more options that diving platform and that wave pool are two more options. So again, that's basically all I have to say. Except I'd like to see you guys a little bit more optimistic and work it out and make this thing happen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I know some of you guys.
Yeah, sir.
My name's Jim Quist. I only know like one or two of you guys, for what it's worth. I have a couple of things to say. Number one, I'll listen to both sides of the argument so far, just like you guys are. And the bottom line is, I want you all to remember who built this town and why they built every home with a view of the lake. Every one of them. And that's changed. And not for the better, to be honest. Because when we go out in the evening and sit down and enjoy the outside, we can go and take a look at the lake. I live on, excuse me. I will be living right next to the property. And so my view of a 51 foot high, which if I'm not mistaken, will be the tallest building in town. Why? They don't, I'm sorry, we just don't see it fitting in the area that it's designated right now. It'll definitely be one of the great places down by the lake somewhere, but not where we are. Thank you.
Thank you. Please.
My name is Marsha Bailey. I just want to kind of reiterate, I spoke at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting also. And for me, I, first of all, it's not in my backyard. So I'm not here because I'm complaining about what's coming. And I think it's a really cool project, but I think it's in the wrong place. Because again, we don't have enough working class housing to accommodate the needs for most of our people, our working class people. And this developer purchased this property knowing what the property is zoned for high density housing, which would be perfect for our working class. And unfortunately, right now, the current fix for our working class is to send them to the outer edges of town, which is wasting their precious dollars that they make on gas, wasting their time for their travel. Not to mention, some of those people don't even have good enough transportation to make that drive. And it creates new and different struggles for working parents because we're sending people way out there that are for our working people. And at the planning and commission meeting regarding the resort, when we asked about the housing, Austin, who was the representative at the developer, at the meeting for the developer, told us that affordable housing doesn't pencil out. So yet they need working class people to fill the jobs at the resorts and we have nowhere to house them. So what is exactly is this developer doing to alleviate this problem rather than causing more of a problem for the people who already live here? And the city seems to continue to allow these developers to compound these issues by rezoning all these properties and changing standards to accommodate these developers. Additionally, it then becomes essentially a bait and switch for the residents. The residents buy in a neighborhood and then after the fact, it gets rezoned for a developer with no regard for the effect that it's going to have on the current residents' properties. These developers do not care about us as residents or our quality of life. They're here to make money and then they'll move along. And we're, we're here, so this is where we live. This developer has tried to spin this, that he's doing it for our kids and our community. I love that, but that's not true. He's doing it for the people that come and stay at the resorts. And our kids are going to have to stand in line with everybody else in the big crowds like Disneyland to use these properties, which would be great. But that's not really what it's for, if we're all being really honest. And I really resent the fact that they tried to scare people or shame people tonight by claiming that if we don't support this project, that we'll make, be making a poor choice for a different alternative. But anyway, tonight, I'm just hoping that, I appreciate what you have said tonight. I appreciate what you have said tonight. And I hope that we can depend on you to listen to a lot of the concerns. And like I said, this isn't even in my backyard. I don't live anywhere near this project. But I see the need throughout the whole city for the other people. Other people that aren't here are working, people that are working right now that couldn't come because they've got jobs that help us every single day and make this city run, more so than most of us who just live here. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy Quist. And my husband and I have lived here almost 25 years. And we've had to abide by the building codes of this city. Meaning that we couldn't put up an eight foot fence to block our neighbor's view or anything else, or build above 15 feet above grade. We had a piece of property over on Chaparral Court by the college. There is a hill behind us where we were not blocking anybody's view and couldn't ever. And they would not allow us to go up to a second story on that. I agree that there's need for children to have something to do in this town. But that property there is not where it should be. All the storage units that are on the other side of the lake where they shouldn't be is where this resort should be, but not in a residential area. It's wrong by any sense. We're taking away the views. I live right across the wash, right for where the Polidori House is. It would block our view of the mountains, the lake. I would see the buildings. I couldn't even put up a wall high enough to block them from seeing into my pool and my yard. So for this, I'm opposed to what's going on.
Thank you, Kathy. Kathy, can you, Kathy, Kathy, can you tell us your last name again? Wisdom, your last name?
Quist.
Quist.
Q I S T.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Yeah, hi, my name is Jerry Durenberger. That's D U R E N B E R G E R. What my concern for this project is the height. What is the existing height right now for the lots on Bahama? Is it 15 feet? Is it 30 feet?
Yeah, so in that zoning area, Mr. Gilbert, that's, it's currently RM.
Sir, to answer your question really quick, the, it depends on how the lots are broken out. Right now, because they have one parcel and it's next to R1, single family, south is 18 feet. But they're requesting a PD plan development that gives them extra height advantage.
Right now, it's 18 feet?
Right. The normal, if those lots get broken out differently, would be 30 feet.
Okay. And they want to raise the height to 52 feet?
For each individual building pad to height to top of ceiling, yes, top of roof.
As the, is the property, they're all going to be combined? Is it going to be a level lot?
No, there is a grade to the lot. What, the reason they're here tonight and the next hearing is they're asking for a plan development approval, which would allow them the extra height for the buildings that they're asking for. But the normal height right now is 30 feet. But it's 18 because they combined into one lot.
Okay, so it's 30 feet. Now, that is at the high point, correct? That'd be the east side, the east side of the lot.
As it sits right now, that large parcel, the northeast corner of it, one foot above Bahama, would as a plane stretch out over the whole property. And as the topography drops, that height increases. Now, because they asked for a planned development, we don't have detailed topographical maps and it's not design review yet. It's just, this is just for the rezoning. They request a specific height for each building. So we hadn't had to worry about what the exact grade drop is across the property yet.
So right now, when the project goes through, it'll be 52 feet is what they're asking at the high.
For each individual residential building from the base to the roof, 52 feet.
Yeah, and you don't know what the building pad's going to be set at?
I'm sorry?
You do not know what the building pad is going to be set at?
Well, that would be measured from the established grade for each individual building.
Okay, so they'll all be a different grade?
Yes.
They will not be at the high point grade?
Correct.
Yeah, no, please, make your way to the podium, state your name for the record.
Danielle Broder, B R O D E U R. I moved here in 1983 at nine years old. My only suggestion in all of this, I think we're missing some of the point of bringing in water, but not as big a buildings. We need another water facility. Love the aquatic center, add on to the aquatic center. But we need another water facility, not just for the kids, but healthy water, good water. And I think that if they're willing, there's a way to split that piece of property to where you can have either your lower income or affordable housing and a water park. I think it's a terrible location for a water park. But if you're going to do it, I would focus on strictly the water. Not the 200 buildings, not the 200 units, not the, all of that, whether it's open to the public, private, membership, whatever. But any kind of water facility, I think that we would benefit from in this town.
Hello, it's Bonnie. I really appreciate you guys. I love the input from everybody. That's amazing. And the fact that the property owner put out a flyer that said, if I came up and spoke positively in favor of the resort, that I would get 10 free passes. I love that idea. I want my 10 free passes. I think the resort is perfect. I think that having a resort like that in Havasu, oh my gosh, the kids would have so much fun. You know I love swimming. I was a little interested in how many people would actually be able to surf at one time because the video only showed one person surfing at a time. How many people would they actually surf? But still, oh my gosh, that resort looks awesome. I was wondering if we could, I actually suggested to him, by the way, he talked to George Kurtz, the owner of CrowdStrike, who bought the property over there on the island. I think they should meet up and work a deal out so you could put it out on the island because that would be the perfect location for that wonderful resort. Because man, the kids deserve that. And then the city doesn't have to pay for a new pool. You know, I think that's kind of a good thing. But, you know, the whole bribery part thing, that, that, that part's not really cool. And the location part is not, not really cool at all. And then you guys, the, well, the couple of other parts weren't really cool either. I would like to know how many people and the cost of it for the people that are going to be used. Because from what I understand, the Mesa Park, which again, looks really huge and amazing, the city of Mesa has 500,000 people in it. Did you know that? So that park is serving 500,000 people. I don't think the park in Havasu is ever going to serve 500,000 people. So I don't, was wondering if there was a cost difference between Havasu and Mesa Park? And then how many people would, like, you know, a bar, who decides how many people are going to be able to go there? Because like, how many, how many people are actually going to be served by the resort besides the people in the complex? Who decides how many people are allowed to be in the pool at the same time? Yeah, that was my question.
I don't have an answer. I'm not operating it. So you know the testimony that I heard as well, so.
Oh, okay, because like, who decides like how many people are allowed in a bar? Isn't that city code or something?
Yeah, so it'll go through, when it goes through, if this item was to pass and the zoning was to pass, which is subsequent to this, it'll go through planned review. And at that time, occupancy numbers would be identified based on the plans that are put forward.
Oh, okay. That, that's just something else. That's just something else to consider.
Thank you. What anyone else like to address the city council on this item?
How's it going? I'm Matthew Stansberry, S-T-A-N-D-S-B-E-R-R-Y. My understanding is basically there's two options on this project if they decide to build it. And I think that a lot of the people that have addressed the council haven't really considered that it could be built anyways, moving some things around. I think at the first public meeting, they talked about that. And then again, at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, if they wanted to, they could simply move some buildings to the other side of the property where they would no longer need a height restriction or a height ordinance change. So technically, they could still build it. And they could build the surf part at the other end where they would no longer need the height restriction to be raised. And then the other portion is to be open to the public, which I think the supporters here have talked about, that it would be something that could be good for the community, kids, teens, things like that, that might want to use it. And then the people that are against it have addressed it as, we don't want it. Therefore, the people that might use it, how are we going to contain noise? How are we going to contain traffic? Things like that, that if it was built in a different, you know, configuration with the buildings on one side and the surf on the other side, would still happen anyways. So as far as it being open to the public, which I think is one of the main things here, I think that the community should support that. And then as far as the height restriction, again, they can get around that by just moving the buildings to the other side of the lot. So ultimately, I think that you should approve both of these, mainly because I think the developer would only build it if they could develop it in the manner that makes most sense to them, both business-wise and facilitating the facility. And then secondly, being open to the public, I think would be good for the community.
Thank you. What anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for questions, comments, or suggested motion. Just again, this is coming to us with a recommendation to not pass the major general plan amendment from our Planning and Zoning Commission of a vote of four to three. What the action in front of us, we heard a lot of things and we offered a lot of leeway tonight during this hearing. This hearing was really about a major amendment to the general plan. We talked about things that are more in the zoning nature and in some of those things. But we would have to have this item pass with five votes in order, or more, for this to be able to move forward because it's a major plan development from there. From, from my perspective, so what is already allowed on this site is with 20 units per acre, which is allowable by code, would be 280 units. This is actually one of the only developers that I recall that has come forward and looked to reduce density for us. They're always looking to add density. This is one of the ones that first was there. Some of the questions that were talked during the public hearing about, you know, the clarity if it was a rental or a hotel or all those things. I had those same questions coming into this public hearing, but I feel that those were answered during my questions earlier. Boat parking was mentioned. The small schematic I saw up on the screen shows it's overparked. So there's more parking than is required by code. And that's the code that we just updated. So we updated the code to require more parking. So that parking situation would be fine for folks to park in through there. Again, these details are stuff that would be talked about in the zoning, but it was brought up during this area. You know, the water and the drought, we are in a tier one drought. But the use for water, I believe, I heard Mr. Cannon say that the use for the surf component is less than a golf course. And also with less density of what's allowed there, we're using less water than if we had 280 units. So, you know, all of these things, it seems that we're close based on what I'm hearing from the testimony today, from the applicant, and then what I'm seeing on social media is there can be a hybrid of something. That can't happen if this major general plan doesn't approve. So if we approve the major general plan, which is the item in front of us, we can get to the next hearing and have some discussions during that, obviously hear public comment, but allow, allow the applicant to get back with the neighborhood, possibly through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and figure it out. Because it seems that there's something here. I don't know what that is, but the neighborhood needs to be consulted and a component of whatever that is. Again, that's just from my perspective. At the end of the day, a lot of people say, you allowed this, or you build this, or you did that. Everybody enjoys private property rights. People buy the property, and then there's a public process in which they're afforded to be able to go through and ask for variances, or rezoning, or whatever it may be. And they followed the code to that perspective, or to that level. So that's just from my perspective. If this, if this item moves forward, it doesn't mean that the next item does move forward, but maybe there's an opportunity to create something that could work together. But again, we need at least five votes to do that. So. Yeah, Councilmember Campbell?
Can I have a shot at this?
Sure.
I first want to tell you, eight of you said yes, 10 of you said no, three of you said send it to planning and zoning again. That's where we're at in government today, always split right down the middle. And somehow, we got to make sense of what we have in front of us. My recommendations right now would be going back to the planning and zoning, because first and foremost, if we don't change the resort at this point, it's mute because he won't be able to get, he can get a liquor license, but a liquor license has to be available to the public use. So if you don't change it to resort, and I'm not saying that's where we're going, I think the planning and zoning needs another shot at this. Also, I live in a condominium complex, I did for a while, Lakeshore Village, many of you might know it. I loved it because I could walk to all the bars, restaurants, up and down there. I could walk to the movies. There's something about, that area has a lot of multifamily around it, a lot of condos, a lot of apartment complexes. And I think the ability to just walk over there and, like they said, have a sandwich, some iced tea, maybe a glass of wine, and watch, and play in the pool, and have some fun. So I don't want this to completely go away. I think we need to work on it. I think we need to talk about the boat parking. So my, I want to talk about the affluent water. We're paying $1.6 million for injection wells right now. Everybody's like, oh, my gosh, that's going to be really expensive, the infrastructure. I'd like to talk about it. Do you know, that is really important to us, that right on the island, we have a lot of affluent. We need to get it somewhere. And what have we been doing? But we've been dumping it on the old resort, the old nautical resort. We've been dumping it over at Refuge. Let's have that conversation. Not to exceed the 30 feet above grade. Most people here that understand grade know exactly what I'm talking about, which means you probably could get some sort of dense. There's something about the verbiage between you and, I'm a little confused still. But I understand grade. And when they said each individual building, grade can go up 52 feet, I'm not really seeing that. But I think the developer already talked about the topography of the land. And I think we can make something happen. And I do 3D design. And what I can do is I can build a house right here, and I can look through the windows of it and see based on the topography of where the next building is going to be. I can do, I can do lines that say this is where the water is going to be, this is where a big red line is that shows a building that means I won't be able to see out the window. I think we need to give this builder a little bit more time to work on this. And I would like to do a recommendation for it to go down, back to planning and zoning to be worked on a little bit more because obviously, the room is split in half, and I don't want to just throw it away. Because I do believe that the developer is right. You may not want this project, but he's very capable of bringing something else back. For the gentleman that came up and said, Campbell, you're always involved with sewer, well, I am. And the density can go up quite a bit more than it is right now. So my, that, I agree with Mayor. Never do you hear that they say, hey, we want to reduce the density. They say, we want to expand the density. This was supposed to be high density. That means the sewer project was probably already designed with this being high-density sewer. So I'm not as concerned about that. It could be a bunch of mini homes, guys. I do agree. Whoever builds on this lot, somebody's going to be pissed off. So, so I'm going to do a motion if every, unless anybody has anymore.
Yeah, are there any comments, questions from members of the council?
Okay, I'm going to do a motion for this to.
Before you do it, just if that is the type of motion that you're considering, the motion would be to send the item back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to reconsider.
Okay. Is that so? And then I don't have to add these things that my want list?
I think, I think you've provided enough of like what your thoughts and feelings are, unless there's something specific in the motion. But it would just be to reconsider based on the change of information that was brought to the council.
Okay. Okay, so I would like to do a motion to send this project back to planning and zoning to work on it a little more.
Do you have a second?
A second, Dad.
Okay, so we have a motion to send this item back to the Planning and Zoning Commission by Councilmember Campbell. We have a second from Councilmember Lynn. We have discussion. I don't support that. I think that's just kicking the can down the road. This has already had, this is the third public hearing for this item. I would not vote in favor of that, which would allow there another motion or subsequent motion to come forward from members of the council. Again, there's two different items, and we kind of blurred the lines tonight, and we had some zoning discussion in here. So the general, major general plan amendment would allow the land use map to change, which then would allow us to have the consideration for the zoning, which is the subsequent item. Again, that's from my perspective. I wouldn't support this particular one, but I would consider a second, a different motion if this were to fail. Vice Mayor Moses, do you have comments or questions?
Yeah, can I have a couple of comments? And I appreciate you giving them that option, Nancy. I'd like to come out and defend the developer a little bit. If I were to be in his shoes and be told, and to feel like the goalpost is being moved on him a little bit, I'd be a little upset too. And I might not have said things as eloquently as he did during those meetings. Anybody who knows me best, anyway, knows that I wouldn't be so eloquent. But I, more than any other developer that I've ever seen come up here, I think this developer has really, really tried to hear you and work with you. I've never seen anything like this where they're like, yeah, we'll just get rid of a building. Yeah, we'll cut a floor off. Yeah, we'll cut, we'll go so low on density. I mean, looking up at that picture, that's not a resort, that's a parking lot with five buildings on it. Like, that is the most parking I've seen on any development apartment complex or resort in this town. I've never seen anything like that. So I see them, and I want to commend you for working with, working with the community as much as you did. I'm one of the, I won't, I mean, I won't say I'm the biggest, but I'm a huge personal property rights advocate. I believe you should be able to do what you want with your property if it's within reason, if the social cost isn't so great. The reason why we're in this situation where he can only build 18 feet on one side of his property, that's because we allowed those people who were in our three-zoned multifamily zones, some of the ones are here tonight, to build a single-story, a single-family residence. We allowed you to do that. And I wouldn't go back because I believe you should have that right to do what you want on your property. Here's my conundrum. I'm also one of the, I'm a huge advocate for workforce housing. And this is our biggest swath of multifamily land. You said it yourself. There is nothing else in this town. I've been trying to find, work with developers, get this type of housing. And so when I saw this come up too, a long time ago, just like Mr. Lane, I'm like, okay, well, what's it going to be? You know, there's this surf thing. I'm like, awesome, kids will love it. You know what I mean? Let's, let's get some new stuff, fun stuff for our youth. And then I heard it will be a hotel. And then Airbnb comes up, and you know, that's scary to me, you know, an Airbnb hotel. And so I'm glad you squashed some of those things. The biggest part, and what we're really here for on this specific item, is are we okay switching this from high-density housing to a commercial aspect of a resort? And I can't get past that. I can't get past giving up our multifamily, giving up our high-density housing to accomplish a resort. I can't do that for my workers. I can't do that for the people who make Havasu run. And that's the hardest thing for me because I'm here for you. And so if there's a way for us to accomplish some housing, and then some cool stuff for our kids, that's what I'm hearing. That's a win-win. And we can work with you on the other stuff. You know, I've never heard so many people be against jobs. That, to me, that argument is crazy to me. You know what happens when jobs come to town? Wages go up. If I can't attract more cooks for my restaurant because he's building another restaurant, I got to pay more to my cooks. That's a good thing for our community. Jobs are always a good thing for a community. So I just want to say thank you for bringing this to us. I won't vote for Ms. Campbell's, I'd really like to hear from you, I won't vote for Ms. Campbell's motion if that's, if going back to planning and zoning isn't what you want. If you don't want that, I won't vote for it. It really is a service to you to do it that way if you were to want to move forward with something. Because if you, if we were to just flat-out deny everything, you'd have to wait 180 days, you'd have to resubmit, you'd have to really go through it all. And she's, we're giving you an olive branch to go back and rework it if you were to go to planning and zoning, if we were to move to push it back there instead of making you start all completely over. So, those are my comments, and I'd really like to hear from you if that's okay.
And if I may, Vice Mayor Moses, or this motion fails, and the motion for the major general plan amendment is changed and we deal with it in the zoning case?
But if I don't have a plan in place, I don't know if I'm okay saying this and putting that over, that layer over what we're about to do. I understand what you're saying, and I appreciate your comments for that. Thank you.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? So if the motion is passed, and this is maybe a question for the city attorney, but I won't address it to her, I'll ask you, Mr. Mayor. When do I get on that agenda? I've been tabled in different projects for three years. I'm not interested in that, you know? Let's make a decision. Is it the next meeting that we would propose? And how often does the planning commission convene? That would be helpful to me in answering your question, Councilmember Moses.
Yeah, so if this motion that we have currently on the table, if we were to go back to, and it passed, and they went back to planning and zoning, what would that schedule be? Is that Ms. Gary or Mr. Gilbert?
Apologies, I'm not going to be able to tell you exactly right off the top of my head. There are certain notice requirements, and then if we send it back for reconsideration, I'm not sure if we have to, what notice specifically that we're going to have to require. So we will have to look into that. But we will do it as quickly as we possibly can within the legal requirements that we're required to abide by.
But it'll be faster than the denial. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I guess with that said, there's been a lot of talk that, oh, Mr. Cannon's super wishy-washy on what he's going to do. And I'm just, the best I can do is give you my truth, right? This is a $350 million project, folks. And the market will dictate, is it five buildings? Is it four buildings? Is it one building? What I'm committed to is to start with the surf, right? We're going to start there. And you heard me say, you know, in certain terms, those last two buildings to the east, maybe those are affordable housing, maybe it's employment workforces. I'm loving what you guys are saying. If you're saying there's a shortage, a dearth of affordable housing for your workers, let's go, you know? And maybe we can work with the city on building something there. So I'm totally open to that, so long as it's a faster process than the 180 days. I don't, you know, I need to make decisions. And we're a very small company, I guess, relatively, not by capital, but by human resource. And we're getting recruited. I pat myself on the back. We've got Texas after us, Florida's after. I mean, a lot of people want us to build, and we just have limited resources. And so we just need to make decisions on kind of what we're doing. I have a lot more to respond to, but I won't because your specific question, I would be okay with that. If you'd make the caveat with the expediency that you can give me, the quickest time available would be a great addendum to your motion. Did I answer your question, Mr. Moses? Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan?
It's my understanding the city attorney had spoken with them and encouraged them to start over and kind of go back through the city process. But after we've reworking this, we kind of just wanted to put it out the way it was, is my understanding. Because after the planning and zoning, wasn't there a discussion with city staff that it might be, make sense to go back a little bit more to the drawing board and come back to planning and zoning? Is that my understanding?
No. No, that's not.
Okay. Okay.
Any additional questions or comments?
I, we're going to give up high-density residential. And it was like, I voted no, I'm going to stand by it. I voted no on the Delta project, which was an unpopular thing because it was for affordable housing, but it was in commercial, it was zoned for commercial. They bought it, zoned for commercial, and then they wanted to come to the city and said, we know, we know we're not allowed to put this here, but we want to put it here, and it's great, and it is. And it was, it would have been great for the community, and it ended up getting approved. But that's not what it's zoned for. And the same thing with this. This is high-density residential for a reason, and they gave the same reason that you did. Well, I don't know where else we can put something that's in a residential that's that big. And I don't know, maybe the developers should get together and discuss because there is a lot of piece of lands out there that, maybe they're not for sale, but you know, maybe but you know, maybe someone's holding a commercial when they need a residential. I don't know, which is, but if we give up the residential, we're not going to have, we're not going to solve our affordable housing problem. So to me, that is the biggest part. I love the project, I love the developer, I love the passion, I love the idea. I just wish it would be not on high residential property. That's, that is the hardest thing that I'm, I can't vote yes because of that specific reason. It's, needs to be on a commercial or down by the water or something, you know, so.
Right, Ms. Gary, one clarifying question. Does the motion on the floor have to have five votes in order to, to pass or just a simple majority?
It would just be a simple majority. The, the two thirds vote is required to approve the major general amendment.
Thank you. All right, we have a motion and a second. We're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
All right. We'll move on to item 7.4, which is ordinance number 24-1339, approving the general development plan and rezone of 1850 Bahama Avenue, tract 115, block four, lots 11 through 13 and 21 through 23, and block five, lots one through nine, 14.08 acres for multiple family RM district, multiple family plan development to accommodate a resort style development with the combination of commercial and residential uses and to allow maximum 52 feet above the approved designated building pad height of each of the buildings.
Yeah. In light, Mayor, Council, in light of the last item and the decision that was made by Council, it would be staff's recommendation to follow the same suit with this item. It would be inappropriate for you to consider this item. We're not changing the development or the general plan as it would not be compatible to support this request.
Do you want a vote on this or just we'll?
I would, if, if, if that's, if you would like to follow that advice, I'd make the same motion to send this item back for reconsideration to the Planning and Zoning Commission in light of the information that was discussed tonight.
Perfect. All right, yeah, we will have to do that. So we'll go ahead and open up the public comment for this item. We did have a few folks that signed up for this item. They may have already shared their comments during the previous item. We do ask since they're very similar and we gave a lot of leeway during the last item that you limit your remarks to things that have not already been addressed or put into the public testimony this evening. So we'll start with Mr. John Lawson. Do you have anything additional to add that would be new to this conversation? Yeah, please make your way to the podium. State your name for the record.
John Lawson. I don't know if it falls into this. I was going to ask the question when I was cut off before. If he went to building 200 and whatever, 20 condos, apartments, whatever, I think we would have to have him answer this question is what kind of square footage would each one of those condo units have? Would they be small? Would they be, you know, three bedroom, two bedroom, what? You know, you're talking about 220 units, you know? I wonder if they're big, little or whatever. And the other thing that I'll just bring up, it goes back to what lady said here. Then when she mentioned the island, go take the project out to that, personally, that's the perfect place for it. My thought directly went to the Nautical Inn. I haven't been out on the island in a little while, but they got a golf course out there that is nothing but weeds. The last time I saw it. And I don't know how many acres that is, but you already got the hotel there. But maybe they could come together, talk, move it out there, make a partnership out of the whole thing. You know, it would fit very well out there. So that's all I really wanted to, wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson. All right, the next speaker would be Katrine Phillips. Did you have anything additional to add to this conversation that you haven't already mentioned in the previous testimony? All right, thank you. Mr. Ron Phillips, did you have anything additional? Okay. And that concludes the speakers that have signed up. But would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? And again, with comments or feedback that has not already been addressed in testimony this evening? Please just make your way to the podium and state your name for the record. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Air motion?
Councilor, or Vice Mayor Moses?
Yeah, motion on the table. Let's send it back to planning and zoning for further consideration.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a motion from Councilmember Moses. We have a second from Councilmember Campbell. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries four to three.
Thank you. All right, item 7.5 is the development agreement for 90 lots on a portion of Trinity at Havasu Foothills Estates with MDCAB LLC regarding a private sewer lift station, private force main and private roadways for the development. Good evening, Mr. Tunneman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Item before you tonight is to consider a development agreement for 90 lots on a portion of Trinity at Havasu Foothills Estates, which is phase three of the entire Havasu Foothills Estates area. This development agreement outlines a developer's responsibilities related to the installation and maintenance of private lift station, private force main and private roadways. The city entered into a development agreement dated August 23rd, 2023 for the private lift station and force main. Since then, a developer has decided to make all the roadways that service the 90 lots private. This has led to the need for the development agreement before you tonight. If the proposed development agreement is approved tonight, the August 23rd, 2023 development agreement will be terminated. It's important to note that the 90 lots that are covered by this development agreement are included in the total number of 697 lots for the entire Havasu Foothills Estates area. Over the past few days, there's been some concerns about a requirement for a secondary access to Havasu Foothills Estates. At this time, there is no requirement for secondary access, but if one was to be required to accommodate, would be required to accommodate future development beyond the 697 lots, it would need to be public. The Trinity developer has explored a potential secondary access. And if you see my screen here, in the area down, it's the southwest corner of their property of phase three. This is Cherry Tree Boulevard here. They've explored putting in wash crossing, probably a box culvert if such. Come through this area, maybe loop around onto their property, coming to the property line and then entering onto state land owns this piece of property right now. So this would have the potential to be public across from Cherry Tree, across the wash, looping through their property and over to state property, state owned land, trust land, and then possibly the rest of the development having a private roadway from there. So I just wanted to inform you of some of those concerns that we received the last couple of days. And that's how that could be accomplished to be public. With that, that concludes my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also here.
Excellent, yeah, thank you, Mr. Tunneman. Yes, so currently there's a development agreement on top of 24 lots. This is, expands it to the 90 lots here. I did have some conversation with some citizens that live up in, in the neighborhood about the topic that Mr. Tunneman mentioned about if or when a second access would ever be put in, which is, there's no application in front of us, there's, there's nothing there. But they would have liked clarification in the development agreement that stated that it would just be with these 90 lots. In the development agreement, there's exhibit A and exhibit A has the legal description, which just includes this area that's highlighted in red on the screen. So it doesn't affect, just address these, these 90 lots that are there based on that legal description. Are there questions or comments from members of council? Councilmember Campbell?
Well, of course I do. I always have questions, that's my job. So my question is, this 90 lots is already part of the plan development in place. They're not asking for additional lots. They're just asking to build the maximum amount of lots that they can have, correct?
That is correct.
On this piece of prop, we have had conversations about several different access points from Geronimo to Terra Vista, I think that Terra Vista or something. We've had the other one, which is Bison, but no Bison, you know? Can this development, the way it sits right here, block any of the potential access roads that we have been looking at, bringing in if and when the day we want to, some developer comes in and wants to develop more of the state trust land or the land that they own or whatever? We obviously, I think it's pretty well known that the council, current council, our conversations are, any further building up there will absolutely need a second access. We have had that conversation over and over. Would this parcel anyway block any potential access from another road?
No, that's why, previously I was kind of discussing the potential option that would be to, to the Bison, Geronimo area that you speak of would be another wash crossing down here to the south. Southwest, crossing the wash, looping through the development over to state land, which is out of the red approved 90 lots that this agreement covers by the, the exhibit A and exhibit B in the development agreement.
Thank you, because the best way I can describe this, I had a lot of phone calls and emails as well. And a lot of people will say, if we put a gate and make this private road, we will limit access into my area. And I'm concerned about the safety, police, fire getting in and out of this community. And we'll have Chief Poloffis later come up and talk to us, I think, about that, I hope for, hopefully. But I am all for private developers taking on their own infrastructure, taking it off the backs of the taxpayers. And I have other communities that tell me they would prefer to own their own infrastructure and do assessments amongst their own HOAs because they don't like the way the city has maintained the roads and infrastructure. And I've seen a lot of that in our own cities. So I am all for any developer who wants to make a parcel of their land as private and put a gate up there, that's not a problem with me at all, as long, because it's going to take the burden off the taxpayers. The only concerns I have ever heard at this point was they're going to block extra access roads to get into the foothills. So far, that is not true. And that's going to be unsafe for the people behind the gate because safety personnel can't make it in there. We'll soon find out, I want to hear from the expert, I don't want to try and explain it, that what they do when they approach a gated community. So at this point, there you have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. I just want to mention there is no discussion and no application for a second access right now. So it's 697. I'm hopeful that we're not going to have a poll in the newspaper or an editorial in the newspaper saying that's happening because it's not for discussion at this point. There's no application, no one's asking for that. Chief Poloffis, would you like to address Councilmember Campbell's question about public safety in these types of neighborhoods?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Campbell. In regards to your question, in regards to if an area is gated, we have several gated communities in Lake Havasu. And per our fire code, it is addressed that any security gate has to have an emergency operation mode to allow us access for an emergency situation into that, that area. So I hope that answer, it's covered by the fire code.
Do you just pull up and type in your four digit code?
So there is, or we have the ANOX key that we will get out. But if it does malfunction or is not working properly, we just go through it. And then they'll buy a new gate.
And there's also a requirement up in the foothills for all of the homes to be sprinkled?
Yes, that is because of the access points that, the limited access points that we have up there. We have a one way in, one way out. We have, Terra Vista is a, an unpaved road for emergency access only, but it runs through washes. And it is locked, it's only for emergency access that goes through state land. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you very much.
Plowing through.
Yeah, you absolutely can.
Thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you. All right, any other questions before we open the public hearing? Oh, Councilmember Lane?
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. And I have to agree with Councilmember Campbell on this. This is really a win-win for, for the, the city because the people that live in those houses are going to pay for the roads, the sewer, the water. But I do have a question for the applicant. It looks like you come into the road where the, there's going to be a gate there off of Cherry Tree. And then it's a road, there's a couple cul-de-sacs and it loops around and the, it's actually houses the border, the entire area. But where the street comes around there, is there going to be another access point right there? Or is it just the one access point?
Mayor, Council, thank you. As of right now, there's just going to be the one access point. So the, the reason for taking the roads private would be because we want to gate the community. The gate will be, as you see that, through that entrance right over the culverts and that will be the only interest, entrance and exit of the community.
You see what I'm talking about though, on the backside, where it looks like the road comes through, right there. It's just down from right there, it looks like the road comes around. You're not going to put a gate there.
No.
Okay.
As of right now, we're going to be building it up. But as of right now, no, there's only one entrance in and out at the, at the bottom.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
As I said, this is a win-win for the taxpayers because the people that live there are still going to continue to pay taxes for the rest of the infrastructure around the city, but then also pay their HOAs and take care of their own roads, sewer and water. So it is good for the city, thank you.
Excellent, all right, are there any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Ronian. All right, this is a public hearing. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item? And we did have a few folks sign up for this one as well. Just put it on the screen. Sorry, I had to change my, my screen over. All right, first we'll go in order, Mr. Dave Hopkins.
Good evening, Mayor, members and staff. I'm a foothill resident and, and I've been, I've owned a lot up there for nine years. I lived there only seven after it was built. But at the time I purchased, they were supposed to, Arizona was supposed to put a bypass road in with a lot of connector roads to it. And the traffic study at that time was approved, the 697 lots, based on that roadway. Well, that roadway disappeared, so we only have that one access road. And by this development that's going on right now for approval, it showed two gated community, two gates to their future lots that basically there would be no other way to allow additional access, you know? And their, and their property now dumps onto Cherry Tree. So we've overloaded Cherry Tree. And coming out of Cherry Tree and McCullough is a dangerous roadway as it is. Coming northbound, you can't even see cars coming up over the rise until you're out in the intersection. And I just think in the future, if this council approves this, that it's going to be back on the council's back later date to come up with a way for a secondary access. Because you're talking about future expansion and there's going to be future expansion up there. And that's where I think that they originally wanted the secondary roadway to go out to Bison because it just for more development. And, and by blocking off those streets where, you know, I just think that it's going to be terrible on, on the, the amount of traffic that we have now. And I think that, that the, back in 2006, I think when the project was approved, it was approved on a traffic study based on that Arizona bypass road that was, you know, deleted. That's my, that's my input.
Thank you. Yeah, that was approved in 2002, so it's, yeah, a long, long time ago. And if I were on council at that time, I would have, I would have wanted two access points at that time.
You mean the state of Arizona cut something out of their budget?
Yeah, their, their planning documents, they did, yes. The next speaker is Mr. Roger Wickline.
Good evening, Council. I realize that we're not here to really speak about the future development. It's obvious in that picture that Apex intends to develop the rest of that lot, that area, as it's already been graded and divided up into lots. I have a document here that says that it's somewhere that they have a proposal to run that road through Terra Vista. I live in the foothills and I'm extremely against this proposal of running that road through our development for the benefit of theirs. I can leave this for you if you'd like.
Yeah, please, if you would like to give it to the city clerk. Thank you. And the next speaker is Ms. Don Kirk.
Evening, Councilmembers, how are you? All right, so I don't disagree with anything you guys said. However, you guys are making your decision based on faulty information. You're getting your information from, it's, it's, it's faulty. And let me just go through. Words have meaning, it's, it's my living, I go through words, I go through contracts. This contract, this development agreement that you guys are going to be voting on, defines Trinity as the real property located in Lake Havasu City legally described on exhibit A. Let's go to exhibit A. Exhibit A refers to these two deeds. Warranty deed number 2021-089026 and 2022-058287. Well, let's pull up the deeds, shall we? I happen to do that. The first deed is from Mr. Lindsay over to MDCAB LLC. And it's not the 90 lots. It's the entire Trinity project consisting of 149.67 acres. Don't believe me? I pulled it up. It's not 90 lots. You are not voting to privatize just 90 lots. You are voting to privatize the entire Trinity project. That's what you're doing. It's in the contract. Um, hold on one second. All right, so what are you voting to do with the entire? All right, so what are you voting to do with the entire Trinity project, not 90 lots? You are defining private roadways as all roadways to, from, and within Trinity. Trinity is 149 acres. It is not 90 lots. I'm trying to make my point, okay? In fact, the contract defines what the 90 lots are.
And Ms. Kirk, not to take some of your time, but we all agree it should be 90 lots, so we can change that language right now, so it just encompasses the 90 lots.
I would love it. And here's a good way to do it. If you're, if you want to just limit it to 90 lots, the contract defines approved lots as the 90 lots. So all you have to do is go in there under Private Roadways, Section 1.1, and where it says all roadways to, from, and within Trinity, you need to take Trinity out and you need to put approved lots. It's really simple. And I've tried to work with Trinity, but they, you know, I'll leave that to explain why they can't make, make friends with their neighbors. So, um, let me see, hold on one second.
Mayor, can I let the council know? And Dawn, I want you to, it came to my attention that you had emailed everybody on council yesterday.
Yes.
And then once again this morning, correct?
Yes.
And none of us received that email. I received it from, because David Diaz, you blindly see David Diaz in that, right?
I did.
He received it, but none of us received it. So I don't know if you guys know this on council, but the information that she was giving us and telling us about right now, none of us ever received. And so I did forward that over to Cal, and all of, I looked over it. All of our email addresses were perfectly written. And so I don't know where that, I did forward that to the city manager as well. So again, I do apologize. As soon as I heard that, I called you instantly.
I appreciate that.
To make sure you were heard. And I didn't get, because I found out about this this afternoon.
Yeah, I appreciate it. I just want you guys to know.
I love your direction right now. Keep going.
Okay, yeah, so I don't want you guys to make a decision on faulty information. I don't know where the faulty information is coming from. That's another discussion. I think that's unacceptable. So that needs to be addressed. Otherwise, this whole entire Trinity project is going to have private roads. And guess what? When you look at the 10, uh, proposed future access points, nine of them are on the north side, which would mean that they would have to come through the Trinity project, okay? So by signing this, you are foreclosing any possibility that those nine potential access points could come through Trinity because you are giving Trinity the sole and exclusive power to say, mm, no, not in our neighborhood. That's not fair. So what does that leave? There's a 10th possible access. And guess where that is? Surprise, surprise, through Tierra Vista, right through the heart of the foothills estates. And that's just simply not fair. We shouldn't have to pay for their development. It's not right.
And Ms. Kirk, you can have a few extra.
Thank you.
Comments since we took your time.
Okay, yeah, no problem. Thank you. Last thing, I, maybe two more little items. Why are we hearing about this in the newspaper on Sunday when it's up for vote on Tuesday? What are the notice and opportunity to be heard rules? I feel like, I feel like this was tried to be slipped in on the night of the debate when nobody was looking, and you guys are operating on, on false information? I mean, if you guys had voted on this and we, and the newspaper hadn't have put it in the paper on Sunday, we would have been screwed. That's not right. Why aren't we being notified? I was told by Dustin Runyon that he was going to be transparent, but he didn't, he didn't think it was important to tell us this, this major amendment. Lastly, I ask you to take into consideration that, you know, a lot was said earlier about how you want to listen to the neighbors, you know, you, you take their, their opinions very seriously. So I hope that you extend us the same courtesy. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kirk. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on this item? All right, seeing that, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Just for my colleagues on the council, I did talk with IT on the reason we didn't receive the email. The email that Ms. Kirk had sent was, was taken up by Barracuda, which is our, it makes sure we don't get any, any suspicious emails to protect our network. And I, and I also spoke to Mrs. Kirk on the phone prior to the hearing this morning, this afternoon. And she did, she had a lot of copy and paste from our code and a lot of formatting changes. Not that that's a bad thing, but Barracuda thought it was a bad thing. So it, it was taken up there. We all get an email from Barracuda of our items that are taken into that area. I will admit, I don't open it because it's usually all junk, so, but lesson learned, but that's why, and I'm glad we did get the information. I do have a question for Ms. Gary. That change that Ms. Kirk proposed on Section 1, 1.1, adding, instead of within Trinity and adding approved lots, would address that just these 90 lots?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, any other questions or comments from members of the council? Or a possible motion?
Mayor, I still have a question. Mr. Runyon or one of your team, can you come up and talk to us about this? Are we only talking about 90 lots?
Talking about 90 lots. So there's, and to even be clearer than that, there's currently 68 lots that the preliminary plat has been approved by the city. There's 90 allotted lots. So we have about, we have 22 that we are going to be submitting for a preliminary plat to the city. The way you can look at it is it's, it's really two developments. You have the 90 acres that is right there, where you have the entrance, where we're putting the gate in the front. And then our, then our goal from there is to develop those entire 90 with the allotted 697 that was originally planned.
Is there any access points that we, for future development, that could block? I look forward to seeing that other document that Ms. Kirk also brought up here. It'd be nice to have this ahead of time. Is the 90 lots, obviously, there is talk that you guys will be coming back at a later date and submitting something for possibly more development. We've all heard the rumors, it's not in front of us today, we're only dealing with the 90 lots. Is that 90 lots going to block the Geronimo, the, like, let's just say, any of those came to the table? Is this 90 lot development going to block any future access into Trin, Trinity, or whatever we're calling it now? Trinity 1, 2, 3?
Negative. And if Jeff, if you don't mind putting that, the red line up there one more time for us.
Steve in the control room, if you could change our screens. I, I know how to do it, I'm just so bulky at doing it. Thank you.
So, yeah, so the agreement is to take the, the roads private for everything marked out in the red. Everything down below that, there's nothing been proposed.
Can I see that document that was offered to the clerk? Those roads?
So what you're receiving is something that actually we've already shared with you. I believe it was about 12 months ago, and we also shared this with the public. So this is, this is information that was shared, where it showed access points, all of the possible access points. So what had happened was when we, when we purchased this development, what had happened was, in order to get the additional units that we wanted for this, these are all residential estate-style lots, you're 15,000 square feet or above, you have your 10-foot setbacks on each side, 20 in the front. What had happened is we were told that we needed a second access. We went after that. It had taken a lot longer than we had originally planned on. And as you know, with developments, we need to get a product out to market. We need to get it out. At that time, we were focused on getting a second access to get the additional units that we wanted, or we could go for the 68. At the time, working with different individuals, and we were working with, whether it was the HOA in Phase 1 and Bison and different individuals, we needed to move on with the project and, and get the product out to market. That, that's the truth.
I remember this conversation with you.
Yep. And our goal is to get this product out to market, to show the great product that we have. Our goal is to continue to be transparent. Our goal is not to try to throw one over on anybody. We know that if we want any additional units in that bottom left-hand corner below the red, that we're going to need a second access. We're going to. We currently have 90 allotted lots with 22 that we still have to submit for a preliminary plat. That can take anywhere from four to seven years to develop all 90 of those. So what we did is we need to get this to market. We need to show the beauty of the front gate, the beauty of the entrance, the beauty of these custom, custom desert contemporary homes, show that we're, we're not going out there, we're not building storage units, we're not trying to throw one on. In fact, we really listened and we kept to the public during the public hearings and kept lowering and lowering and lowering the density. We removed, at the very, very beginning, we even removed some of the, we were going to do condos up in the front, completely removed them. So we listened to the public, and we've worked with them. And we will continue to. So as of right now, we are focused on those 90 lots for the next four to six years with regards to, to building in, in that division.
And after this conversation, I had the joy of getting a razor with Mrs. Kirk, and we drove all around, and she showed me her concerns, and it was really enlightening. I can see why a lot of people over the years have been discouraged with this project. I go back so many years on it, and it's changed so much, including the bypass, which is beyond frustrating, and that's why the community doesn't trust anything that happens up there now. I trust you. I, I've known you forever. I have known you to be a fibber. What do you think about the Geronimo access? I mean, now?
Yeah, Mr. Runyon, yeah, we're here for a development agreement. We are not talking about second access at all. That's not even on the consideration.
Okay, well, I just got this information in front of me, so I was concerned. Okay, no? All right, let's talk about another day.
That was provided, that was already there. We're not, yeah, that's just not what we're.
Don't worry about it.
We're not here to talk about second access. You can worry what you, what you need and ask any questions about development agreement.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell, if you could hand that document to Councilmember Lane, so that every council member has the ability to, to review. Okay. And I just want to make sure that each council member has the same opportunity to read it at their, their length. Are there any additional questions or comments from members of the council? If not, we'll entertain a.
Thank you, Mr. Runyon.
Thank you.
We'll entertain a motion at this time.
Mayor motion.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane.
I move to approve the development agreement with MDCAB LLC. Terminate the August 23, 2023 development agreement with MDCAB LLC and approve the development agreement termination notice with the changes that we talked about, so that it highlights the 90 lots.
Second. We have a motion from Councilmember Lane and a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Councilmember Lane?
Motion carries 7 to 0.
Thank you. I am going to take, as the chair of this meeting, I'm going to take a little bit of leeway, and I'm going to move up Item 7.8, so we can hear that item at this point. And then we'll circle back to Items 7.6 and 7.7. So we're going to hear just Item 7.8, which is Animal Care and Shelter Services Contract with the Western Arizona Humane Society. Captain Williams. Ms. Williams, did I throw you off technology-wise by doing that? Okay. Yeah, thank you. All right. Captain Williams?
Yes, Mayor, Council, thank you. Obviously, the subject of this is our Animal Care and Shelter Services Contract with the Western Arizona Humane Society. As you're all aware, Lake Havasu City Police Department handles the animal control responsibilities within the city and contracts with Western Arizona Humane Society, also known as WAS, for animal care and shelter services. The proposed contract will commence on October 1, 2024, terminate on June 30, 2029, and the following payment terms are in your packets. All of them are $300,000 per fiscal year, excluding fiscal year 2425, which is year one, which we had an extension granted for three months from July 1 to September 30 of our current contract. With that being said, WAS, in this new, new contract, will retain all boarding and impound fees, which is a change for us from our existing contract. Appropriation and the amount of $225,000 for fiscal year, or excuse me, for fiscal year 2425 is included, starting July 1 through September 30, 2024. This will cause an increase of $50,000 to our overall operating costs for this year one. Contingency funds will be requested to cover this cost. Future costs will obviously be appropriated in future budgets. So ultimately, that's how that came to be. Let's see here, we do have a brief slide presentation. I'd like to, and I know it's been a long, long meeting, it will be brief. I would like to introduce our senior animal control officer, Mr. Chris Luchan. He's been an instrumental part of our team with the animal control department for, since basically his inception, he's been with us for 10 years now. With that being said, in this short presentation, he's going to explain our relationship with WAS, a little bit about what we do, and then we'd entertain any questions moving forward from that point, if you have any.
Thank you, Captain Williams.
Oh, you're right behind me.
Mr. Mayor, Council, good evening. I know we've been here for a little while, so we'll, we'll keep this as brief as possible. Like Captain Williams says, I'm going to kind of go over kind of what we do in animal control and how it kind of relates to the current contract with humane and going forward from there. One of the things that we do in animal control when we pick up a stray animal is we don't just automatically take it to the shelter and, and drop it off. What we do is we check to see, does the animal have a license? Does it have a name tag? If none of that is affixed to the animal, what we do is all of our vehicles are equipped with microchip scanners. We scan the dog to see if there's any microchip in it. If so, we contact the microchip company, get the owner information if it's available, and do everything we can to reunite that animal back with its owner versus taking it to the shelter. A lot of times, that's not possible, so the animal does have to go to the shelter until it can possibly be reunited with the owner. With that, under state as well as our city codes, there are certain timelines that have to be followed for those animals. Every animal that goes into the Humane Society, regardless of the reason it's there, all goes through a very thorough intake process. The intake specialists, they bring the animal in, they weigh it, they sex it, they check the breed, they basically give it a good visual exam to see if there's anything visually wrong with it, and give it any vaccinations that are required through their intake protocol. If it does need to see the veterinarian or the medical side of it for any reason, they take it over to the medical side, have it examined. If it needs meds, they take care of that, the very basics, until an owner can be found. Once that goes on and the animal's placed into the stray holding area, there's, for a stray animal, we have two types of holds. There's a tagged and a non-tagged. Under our state and city codes, a non-tagged animal is one that does not have a microchip, collar, name tag, microchip, anything like that, where we cannot identify who the owner is. Those animals are legally held for three days, pending an owner to be able to come reunite their animal. At the end of that three days, those animals are then turned over to the Humane Society through the police department. During those hold times, those are property of the police department, just like evidence. If an animal does have a tag, microchip, anything that would lead us to an identified owner, those animals are held for five days under the same thing, allowing those owners to redeem their animals. One of the other things that comes in, not only strays, is what we have, what we call agency assist. Somebody gets arrested, somebody goes to the hospital, we know who the animal owners are, those animals are held for, under that five-day type of period. There are other times that the animals go into the Humane Society for other types of holds, those are bite quarantines, if an animal bites somebody. And we're only speaking about animals biting persons. If the animal is not current on rabies vaccination, it's required to be housed at the Humane Society for that quarantine period of 10 days from the date of the bite. Not all bite reports we take are on the same day, sometimes they're delayed. We go from 10 days from the date of the bite, and then that owner can come in, pay the fees, have their animal vaccinated, and take the animal home with them. We also have animal cruelty seizures. Anytime we're going to seize animals due to somebody being cruel or neglecting their animals, it's actually a two-step process. The animal cruelty charges are criminal. That's one step. The animal cruelty seizure is civil and a completely different step. Under that, the animal owners are issued a notice that we're seizing these animals. They have 10 calendar days from the date of the seizure to apply to the court for a hearing. Then the court has, I believe it's 15 days from that filing to have and hold a seizure hearing. So kind of two different caveats on that. Some of the animal cruelty seizures we've done, the animals that owners never petitioned for a hearing, they automatically will become property of the police department, again, turned over to the Humane Society. Vicious animal seizures are a little bit different, those hold times are a little longer. When the circumstances meet the threshold of a vicious animal, that animal is immediately seized and held until the case, the criminal case is dispositioned by the court. case is dispositioned by the court. That could be a matter of 30 days if the animal comes, if the owner comes in and says, hey, I'm just going to relinquish them. We've had animals held as long as 200 days depending on that court case. So it kind of averages, the average is about 90 days on a vicious animal case. Why do we need animal shelters? They're a necessary evil. Okay? In an ideal world, we wouldn't need an animal shelter. But under our city and state codes, we need animal shelters to house these animals that are running at large or animal, people that are being cruel to animals or the vicious animals. We have to have somewhere to house these animals and the ones that can go up for adoption, they have to go up for adoption. So it's one of those own unnecessary evils. I kind of say when people ask me, what do you do? We, our job is twofold. We protect people from animals and animals from people. We protect both sides of the fence on that. So animal shelters are very important. Otherwise, we'd have dogs running loose everywhere, no way to contain these animals. So again, they're a necessary evil. The first animal shelter was built in 1869 back east in Pennsylvania and we've come a long way since then. Animal control has come a long way since then. So with that, we are asking for you guys to approve the contract going forward and be able to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Lujan. Are there any questions from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Councilmember Lane?
Yeah, I have a, I have a, a question or maybe just kind of a request and, um, you and I talked about this. We have, um, a brand new community resource team that was created and we also have our task force that works with United Way, Faith and Grace, the Clothes Closet. We have a lot of, um, clients that come in and they will refuse services because they have animals. And so, and some of this is a lot with like our domestic violence situations. So is there anywhere in this scope of work or contract that we could make out a deal with the Humane Society that they could take these animals for a limited time, um, while these people are getting the services that they need?
Actually, I, and Patty Gilmore could speak to this a little bit more, but the Humane Society already has a program established through Faith and Grace for those type of issues where they actually do take in animals.
And, and I, and I've heard that that, that they do have that agreement, but I've also heard from the other side that there's been times where they haven't taken those animals because they didn't have room or after 30 days, those animals were adopted because the people were not able to get out of their situations. And so when I was talking to one of the associates over at Faith and Grace, they were asking if we can extend that to 90 days. And I do understand we do have that agreement with Faith and Grace, but with our new community resource team, there's going to be other organizations that are going to need that same need.
I think that's something Patty Gilmore could speak to and she is here today.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Gilmore, if you could make your way to the podium, but.
I think you'll know how to spell my name by now. Patty Gilmore, yes, Faith and Grace. Uh, they came to us, I think, uh, over a year ago, 18 months ago, and they asked, it was actually Susan Murphy that came to us when she was with them. I don't know if she still is. And she asked if we could do something for Faith and Grace. And it was actually Don Clark at a board meeting when he was one of our board meters, uh, members that originally brought this to us with Faith and Grace. Um, so I said, yes. So we had a meeting with them and we did explain to them that more than not, our shelter is overcrowded, but we will work with you. Um, we have never ever, since we've had Faith and Grace, adopted out one of their animals without the person that owns the animals releasing the animal to us. What we do at the Humane Society with the Faith and Grace animals, most of them in a domestic violence situation, believe it or not, these animals are not vaccinated and they're not spayed or neutered. One of the things that we do for free, we don't charge them a penny for this, we vaccinate and we spay and neuter. We have kept animals up to 90 days for them. There was one lady that they were trying to find housing out of state and it was her cat. The one lady that we held for 60 days was two animals that we had to put in two separate kennels, which are double kennels, which are now four animal spaces. And remember, we're usually overcrowded because those animals were very aggressive towards each other. I stayed in contact with, um, the lady, one of the ladies, because there's two, two directors, I think, of Faith and Grace, talking to one, we stayed in constant contact. She called us and said that she had found a casita for the lady and it was good. The, the dogs were going to go back to her. Then she called us again and said, sorry, we can't come and get the dogs because the casita has fallen through. Will you give us just a few more days? We gave her another two weeks and then we called and we said, listen, these animals are miserable in the shelter. Our job is to try and get animals out of a shelter, not hold them there indefinitely. And we told her these animals are losing weight even though we feed them like crazy because they're, they do flips. They're unhappy. Okay? So we told her, what would you like us to do? And she said, the lady said, release them for adoption. So that's when we adopted them and both, no, only one animal has been adopted. The other hasn't because it's very old. It's 14 years old. So we are more than happy to work with Faith and Grace, but if they want us to spend, extend to 90 days, there has to be some kind of situation where we receive some money because three months is a long time for us to be looking after these animals. We'll take them for a certain length of time, but when you think that most of them are not spayed or neutered or vaccinated and I have to pay my veterinarians to do that as well, everything costs something. I'm sorry, but we do the best that we can.
Councilmember Lane, I think in a discussion you and I had, you had mentioned that, uh, resources such as blankets and food and, and money might not be an issue. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but.
Yeah. So, um, speaking to Debbie Pennington down at United Way, we get, um, donations of food. We're willing to bring that over. And I do know that you receive blankets and towels from the Clothes Closet on a weekly basis that they, your volunteers come and pick up from us. So we're willing to work on those things. I really think that when it comes down to, we have some people in some very vulnerable situations and the, we have people that literally will not leave their cars or their situations because of the thought of losing their animal. And they're in that spot and that's the only safe thing. So I, I didn't come to debate what, you know, what the stories were on each. I'm only bringing to what was brought to me and working very closely with these organizations. I just want to make sure somewhere in this contract that we're doing that because our service is to our people that live here. And I really don't want to go down this rabbit hole. I really don't. But if we're going out of town to bring dogs in here to, to sell or to whatever we're doing, because I, I do know we go out of town to bring animals into our shelter to sell and that, that's mine. But if we're not taking care of our people here first that have their animals and the city is paying for that type of service, that's the part where I'm uncomfortable with. Um, I know that the amount of dogs, I think, that, and cats were, I believe, speaking to Sarah, were at Faith and Grace, it was like two a month that maybe that this happened. So it's not a lot. And we are willing to work, like if that is with volunteers or with bringing like the blankets or food everywhere we get, we're willing to, to do that. We just need to make sure that people are getting the help that they need and it's not because they don't have a place for their animals.
Okay. And may I respond? First of all, we don't sell animals. We adopt animals and many times our animals are free to the public because our supporters supply donations to us, monetary donations. So then we can have animals sponsored. Um, volunteers coming to us have to do a training course. They have to because you're handling animals that we don't know their history half the time and some of them can be dangerous. So any volunteer that comes to us has to go through a training session. Um, we, we have to do that because of insurance purposes and somebody getting hurt. Saying that we bring animals from out of other agencies, we help Parker, we help Kingman and we help Bullhead City. We consider them to be our sister, um, organizations as well. Um, we even help them with scrubs for their, their, um, shelters. They're all municipalities, but they spay and neuter all of their animals, um, most of them before they come to us, but we do also have a contract to spay and neuter their animals. So when they're bringing in their animals, we also are helping them medically. So there's two sides to every story here and, and that's what I want you to understand. Yes, we are willing to help, but I'm sorry, we're not social services. We can't constantly do this for a long time. Three months is a long time. And originally, when they asked us to do this, it was going to be 30 days. And then they wanted to extend it to 60 days and now they're saying 90 days. So is it going to keep on getting further and further? We will do it for free and we will spay and neuter for free and we will vaccinate, but we have to get something, some help too. And it's mainly the public that give us our blankets. We don't go to the Clothes Closet on a weekly basis. Uh, I can check with our manager, uh, but we don't. We don't get towels and food from the Clothes Closet every week. We don't.
I'm there. I'm there when the pickups are there. I'm, I'm there while they're begging it, begging it. Please.
Mr. Jenkins, make your way to the microphone. Sorry, there's folks at home that.
We've dealt with Michelle and, um, the, the family between the Clothes Closet before, but we make no regular visits.
There's, there's no Michelle there. It's Christine.
I believe Michelle is her mom, correct? From, from X plus. Yeah, we've, we've never made one pickup. If, if we've have, they've come to us and, and maybe dropped something off, but we don't make any regular visits.
So I think the real question, you're, you're willing to work with these organizations and continue to do it?
Yeah, I mean, if they have them, we would love to have extra blankets and stuff, but I don't know of any record recently where we've done that. Um, glad to take them.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I'm not going to debate.
Sure.
I know who it was that picked up because we could check into it because we're, we could be getting ripped off to be honest with you because we're not getting that product.
Yeah, I think we can address that offline. I don't know if that's really, I think the, the root of this is you're willing to work with, uh,
Yeah, most definitely.
Folks in the shelters and.
Seriously, there might be some missing product out there because we're definitely not, I'm not sending anybody and Patty's not, and usually that would get coordinated through us.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any additional questions or comments from members of the council? Councilmember Lane? And then we'll go to Vice Mayor Moses.
I appreciate, I appreciate that. So, um, I love animals. I think they're awesome. I think every child should grow up, uh, taking care of an animal. It teaches them responsibility. But sitting up here, we're also very responsible for taxpayer dollars and ensuring that we are only paying for those services that the city should be responsible for, which are the animals that are coming from animal control. And, uh, we had our fourth quarter report here today. Um, and you can probably help me with this a little bit. Um, but it looks like we brought in 99 animals from Lake Havasu City, came into your, your organization on this last quarter.
Now, are we talking about animal control?
Yes.
Animals? Okay, so.
Just animal control because that's the only thing the city should be paying for.
Well, and that's where there's discussion on this because there are stray animals brought in by the public because they don't want to wait an hour or two for animal control to come to their house and pick up their animals. So we say to the public, please bring in the stray rather than it run the streets. If you look on Facebook, every single day, there are animals loose in Lake Havasu. And we, we try to find out who these, we'll even contact these people on Facebook and we ask them, bring the animal into us. So the public are bringing in just as many strays and then we have the public that are now homeless because they've lost their house and they're bringing their animals to us and they are Lake Havasu animals. Rather than they dump them in the desert, we ask them to bring their animals into us. So it's not only animal control, and this has been a point of contention with the city for a while because they are only looking at animal control numbers. Okay? If you remember, a while back, there was only one animal control officer. Now you have four. Why do you have four animal control officers? Because of the numbers that have increased in this city. And there's a lot more homeless people. There's a lot more animals coming into us. So the thing is just having the animal control number, you can't count that. There's strays from the public and the ci, and the city residents turning in animals. Everybody has to show when they come in, an ID card plus the police department put together a form. If it's a public animal coming in that's a stray, they have to fill out that PD paperwork that says basically, are you sure you are not the owner of this animal, blah, 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 because they've brought it in themselves and they found it as a stray. So it's not only animal control of animals.
Well, we have to use data that we have, um, for doing our budgeting and, and our dollars. Um, maybe there should be a separate category where they have, um, where people have brought it in, but have certified that they were stray animals and they brought it in instead of animal control. Right now, all we have is the numbers that you have provided us and the numbers that you provided is that there were 99 animals from Lake Havasu City. Forty-four of those were returned to their owners. Out of those 44, did they pay for any of the services that were provided after animal control brought them in?
Some pay. Uh, with the money that we received, that we paid back to animal control, all impound and boarding, we collect the money, we do all the work and then we give it back to the city. And that's one of the reasons we've changed this because no shelter in Arizona returns their money back to the city for impound and boarding. And we've done that since 1978. And I said, we're not doing it anymore because we're the ones that do all the work. We should keep that money. So people, that, a lot of that money was returned to the city for impound and boarding for those strays that came in, right?
Can you tell me how much that is?
Yeah. Um, uh, impound and boarding, Chris has those numbers. I think it's about $5,000, something like that.
For fiscal year 23, 24, it was a total of $13,327 that was brought in from boarding and impound. Now, just so you understand how that works, the impound fee currently at the city rates is $29. So the, for the animals that we bring in, the public is charged $29 for that impound. They're then charged $29 per calendar day for every day that that animal is in there for, to offset the boarding cost for that. And the impound fees are escalating to where it's a, if it's a first offense, the animal's never been in there before, it's $29. And then it goes, if they're a repeat offender, up to four times or more, it basically quadruples up from there, uh, for those repeat offenders. And that's in a rolling 12-month period.
Okay, thank you.
Then, um, it says that 23 were adopted. When the people do the adoption, do they pay?
Uh, depends on whether we're having a special. Sometimes it's a sponsored animal. We have to spay and neuter every single animal before they go out and vaccinate them, DAPB, Border Tell and rabies. Um, if you go to your own veterinarian, a spay or neuter can cost you up to $600. Um, and we have a special program, a SNIP program for the public here in Lake Havasu. And, um, of course, we also have our veterinarian who does private, um, vet work, our three veterinarians. Also something I might mention, David, that I don't think council knows, um, we have hoarding cases in this city. We had 31, I think it was, 31 shih-tzus brought in in the middle of the night. Um, all of those shih-tzus were inbred, my favorite breed, but they were all inbred. And, um, we had to euthanize some of them. That costs money to euthanize because the doctor has to do it with a tech. We had to do a lot of medical with those animals and we actually, um, had a lot of puppies out of that 31 as well. Big court case, um, just under $30,000 worth of fees that were belonging to the Humane Society for everything we did. Because of our contract, we didn't get a penny. The woman didn't pay a penny. So the city lost out, but we lost out the most because all those animals were with us and we never got paid. So it's six of one and half a dozen of the other. You can't go by the, the amount of stray animals brought in by animal control. There are so many other things going on. I, I have invited council so many times to come to our, I still consider it to be a new shelter because that is the Western Arizona Humane Society shelter. It is not the city's shelter and it's, the city didn't put $1 into that shelter. Our donors did. And you're very, very, this city's very, very lucky to have that shelter. Or you can build a new shelter like Mahavy Counter does. I just saw your face and $5 million for the shelter up at Kingman and 1.5 is the budget. And we're asking for $300,000. So that's, that's putting it bluntly, David. Oh, sorry, Mr. Lane.
Uh, no, that's okay. You can, my parents called me, David. You can call me, David. I don't, I don't have a problem. We, we know each other.
So it's, as I say, it's a, um,
It's elder abuse.
It's, it's a, it's a difficult situation, but we can't do it for the contract that we've done it on for the last five years. It's impossible for us.
And I, I understand that. And, um, what I'm looking at is, so there's like 30 animals, uh, for this quarter that weren't adopted, weren't returned back that you're taking care of.
Well, that's on the, the straight side. There's a lot more. If you look, we have a 98 percentile live release rate. It's the highest in the state of Arizona, one of the highest in the nation and Best Friends, who is the best in the country. They are constantly asking us to be part of their program, which we are now. Um, and we're very proud of what we do. And I think this city is very, very proud of what we do too.
Oh, they're without a doubt. The city's very proud of what you do. Uh, we all really appreciate everything you do. Um, my only issue is those of us up here have to look at this from a budgetary
Absolutely.
standpoint and watch the taxpayer dollars. When I compare what you do, um, and you're looking at for this first year, $225,000, uh, to handle those animals that come in from animal control. And then I look at the services we provide, uh, for example, for , uh, battered and abused women and children. And it's $100,000. So, um, I was And it's $100,000. So I was going to ask Captain Williams to, to talk about that a little bit, but I don't think we need to. That, that's all right. It's, I think we, we know where the, the, it's apples and oranges. You can't really compare them. However, that's very important. And we pay $100,000 for battered women and children, and you're asking us to pay $300,000 for, for animals. And that's, I, I, I take issue there. I don't think that it costs us. It does cost a lot of money to run your organization, without a doubt. You need funding somewhere. But we can't put it on the ta- the back of the taxpayers. They're not the ones that should be paying for it. Other than the animals that our police department are bringing into you. Now you say that, that the citizens are bringing in strays as well. Maybe you need to add another category so that we can look at that as well. I just, this should, should be.
Member Lane. Oh, no, yeah.
You can't talk.
Mr. Jenkins, you can't talk from there, but Mr. Lane, it is included.
It is reported on our quarterly.
So it's 91, isn't it?
It is.
The numbers that you're interested are all reported on our quarterly forms. They were just not provided to you at the moment.
I see, I see the numbers about the people bringing them in, but that doesn't break it down to.
Per our contract, though, we're an open admission shelter. And they want us to be available for those people to be there to, to surrender their animals to. So per our contract, we have to take those animals in. So in our, in our thinking anyways, is that, that that number should be considered, whether it be a public stray or a, a public surrender because they can no longer keep their animals. Or if it was a stray found on the street, per our contract, either one of those situations, we have to be available. So therefore, our, our thinking anyways, whether it's right or not, our thinking is if we're mandated to take that animal, that count should also be included with our total intake count.
I understand that. Let me finish my thought and then maybe. The separate being is the ones that the people find on the street versus the ones that they just can't take care of anymore. So that's what you're saying is that there's more animals that if they called animal control, animal control will be bringing in more animals. That's not people just bringing them in because they don't want to take care of their animals anymore. The taxpayers shouldn't be paying for that, in my opinion. They should be paying for the ones that the police department are bringing to you. That's what I'm getting at. I just, I think that this should be a negotiated contract that's a little bit better. And I don't think we had the negotiation that we needed. Based on the conversations that I had, and that just rubbed me the wrong way. I feel that a negotiated contract should be a negotiated contract, not a statement of this is what you have to pay us and you don't have any other choice. And that's kind of where we're stuck. You're the only game in town. So we're kind of stuck with this, whether we like it or we don't like it. I would like a caveat, and I don't know if it's in the contract. I didn't see it when I read it. An escape clause that if we do come up with an alternate plan that is less expensive, we can use that. Yep. All right. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Are there any other? Councilmember Campbell?
Yes, I do. This has been a conversation and it's, my, my tag word on it is save the puppies. And the reason why I say this is my, my niece is a veterinarian. That is one of the hardest, it's almost harder to be a veterinarian than it is to be a doctor. These clinics are hiring up these veterinarians all day long and they're making very, very good money. When was the last time the contract was raised? If I remember correctly, it was like five years. There was no increase in the overall contract between. Can you tell me, how long has it been until today, possibly today, that you had a raise in the, in the contract?
Five years ago, it was dropped. The amount was dropped.
That's right. You, you literally, they dropped the contract five years ago.
It keeps getting.
And then we fast forward these last four years and the economy, what it costs to get employees, insurance, electricity, your air conditioning bill, food for the animals, water, infrastructure. You have a community that's extremely supportive for you, including, no different than the pickleball courts. Everybody's thrilled to help because everybody loves pickleball courts in the community. And it's us, the taxpayers, that are paying for those facilities. We need a shelter. Our community has been extremely charitable to make sure that our animals are taken care of. I do not want my officers having to drive up to Kingman or Mojave County where they've already told us, we're not taking your dogs. I'm not going to be the council person today that you choose to say the city is not supporting us. I'm sure you'll get support, but the bottom line is I don't want one animal being taken out in the desert and shot. I, and I don't want one animal, there's so much more that goes on. We're talking about large animals, small animals. You have a veterinarian and.
Three veterinarians.
Three veterinarians, okay? We talk about, in Facebook, you see it all the time. I tried to take my animal into a local vet and I couldn't get anybody to help me. They're, so they're taking them to Vegas. And if you're doing the vaccinations, and what I understand is the minute that animal shows up at your shelter, you're doing something that many other shelters don't do, which is giving them the parvo. Is that correct? I mean.
We do a parvo, every animal that's under a year old, we give a parvo test to. A parvo test for us to buy is $15. And we give a parvo test to every animal that's under a year old. That's why this city has been blessed with not having parvo. Riddled up in Kingman, riddled down in Parker, and we're in the middle. So that's what we make sure we do. We have a separate intake center. When we built, or when we remodeled the new shelter, I did so much research on design and you, you've been to our, it's, it's state of the art. It's fantastic. It really is. But we, we go through so many different obstacles to try and make things better for the animals in this community, which in the end does make it better for the humans in this community because of stopping distemper. You know, when we, when we built the new facility, we had a whole thing that's for power washers. So the chemical goes through the walls. We built a new sewer system, which was unheard of in this city. Remember all the leaps and bounds we went through for that? To make it the best, so then we can control disease. And then I brought in Dr. Solana, who's our medical director. And then we brought in two other vets. We've got six vet technicians. I mean, and then we, we, all of our vet prices are way cheaper than all the other vets in town for this community. Everybody was desperate for another vet because two vets left and two corporations have taken over, two of our local vet, one corporation have taken over two of our local vets. Big corporations are taking over the family vet businesses, which is so sad, which is raising all the prices. And everybody's complaining, why do I have to go to Las Vegas? Why do I have to go to Phoenix? And we're trying to do everything we can to make it right. But the thing is, one of our vets is solely for the use of the shelter. He is the shelter veterinarian. And he does rounds every day to check all the, it's like a hospital. It's run like a hospital. And it has to be. And you may say, oh, it's animals and it's apples and oranges to humans. You know what? Some of our pets are better than our children. And that's where I look at it and they're looked after better.
As a community, we love our animals a lot of, I think there's a population, there might be more animals than there are people. But also I can just, I understand domestic violence shelters and all of that. We can have a debate on all of it. I can sit back here and say, we give the PED $500,000 a year. If I was to get rid of one or the other, I prob- you know, I would definitely think that the shelter gives us more value than the PED. I'm not saying that per se, but if you ever put me right out there and said, what do you think? So right now, I think you guys are doing a phenomenal job. I think your community loves you. I think they're there supporting you. And I think that you deserve a raise, just like everybody else has in city government and contracts. And so to say that you did take a reduction last time and then, you know, all these contracts and negotiations, I don't think we have an option. I think it was funny when they were saying, we're going to just get rid of ADOT altogether. And we were all sitting around going, then what? You know, we, there's no other solution. And there is no solution other than to partner with you. So it sounds like this seems to be a pretty strong contract and I hope that we can all.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Are there any additional comments, Vice Mayor?
Oh, a while ago, you mentioned something about we take in dogs from Parker. Not a two-way street. If we're overdone, you send them down there too?
A lot of, believe it or not, a lot of animals, we call them witness protection animals. We have to hide animals from certain people, the way we have to hide humans from people that have abused them. So we'll take some of Parker's or Kingman's and then some of us, some of ours will go somewhere else. So then the owners can't find them. What Park, what we do for Parker, we do spay neuters for Parker. And they pay, they pay us for the spay neuter, which is $70 for a spay or a neuter, which is nothing. I mean, doesn't even cover the pharmaceuticals. And then we will adopt out those animals also. They're only, those animals, because they're cute little puppies, are only in the shelter for 24 hours, if that, after surgery. So we do partner with our other shelters and we should. Now, the other shelters are all municipalities. They all get big tax dollars, but we're the only ones that is not a municipality. As you know, we are a private organization. There's been servicing this city since 1978.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a subsidized entity. I mean, obviously with this contract. But I just want to make sure that we're serviced, the situation where we have a Faith and Grace, you know, situation. That we're taking care of our citizens first before we.
Well, we do. And we, and as I said.
You know, I, we gotta look out for our people.
Exactly.
We're paying for our people.
And you see, the thing is, with, with Faith and Grace, with this, this last situation, they said that that lady may be with them for a year. We can't, we don't want to keep animals for a year. We don't want to keep the regular shelter animals for a year. Our job is to get an animal out. It's like they're in prison and they start doing backflips. They go kennel crazy. We have to get the animals out as soon as possible. I did talk with Faith and Grace and said, you know, we can probably get some kenneling for you. If you would be willing to put some kenneling in your yard for the animals, something to help. And we told them that we would help them with that. And she said, Patty, we can't have animals in our facility. Just like the way we don't want humans in our facility.
Are there any additional, we still need to open the public hearing yet, but Councilmember Dolan?
I have a question for Captain Williams. So based on the numbers, how many, we haven't really talked about anything specific numbers wise. How, how many animals a year do we bring into the Humane Society? Or how much did we bring in last year?
Sure. Mayor, council, councilmember Dolan, let me just pull that up. Apologize, I got a lot of notes here. Half of which. I think I got it. Yeah, same. FY 2324, sir, 287.
Okay. And do we know how much, so it's, the new contract is 300 plus they get to keep the fees they collect. Do we have an idea how much those fees are equivalent to in the contract?
Roughly what we've been seeing, if I recall correctly, it's about $15,000 a year.
Yeah, not to interrupt Captain Williams, but the fees are actually set by us in the fee schedule. So, so the number that they're collecting is our fee schedule that we adopt and it's about $15,000 a month. Now, in addition to, excuse me, a year, yeah, in the fiscal year, excuse me. Captain Williams, you'd mentioned, I believe, Councilmember Dolan, you asked how many came in from the impounds from LHPD, but what about the public stray animals as well? I think that's the next number on this, on this spreadsheet. I only have it for the quarter in front of me.
Based off the quarterly reports that Humane submits to, to the city, for fiscal 2324, LHCPD impounds were 287, public stray impounds were 211. Owner relinquishments were 491 for a total of 998,000 animals.
So 998 total animals. Yes. It's good, Slade. We're saying a couple of extra words.
If we look at the animals, we're, we bring in, it's about $1,000 and $1,097 for, per animal that the Humane Society gets paid from the ones from us. If we also include the ones that the community brings in, which is part of the services we're providing the community, it ends up being $632 per animal. Do we have an idea of how that compares to other contracts with the state and within the state of Arizona? So I mean, like with anything else, we'd be comparing apples to apples. I guess that's my biggest concern is, I, I, like I said, you guys are an amazing organization. You do a lot for the community, but that's also why the community supports you. My problem is, I, I do feel like everyone should get raises and I hope the staff all heard that because they're going to look, look forward to that. So I, my concern is, is that we're subsidized, that if we're using city tax dollars to subsidize an amazing nonprofit, what other amazing nonprofits, profits are we not subsidizing here in Lake Havasu? And I guess that's my biggest concern is, it's, like I said, we're, we're paying, our job is not to support, subsidize the Humane Society, it's to, to provide a service for those either 287 animals or the 211 included for 400. So those 500 animals, that's what we're providing the service for. I guess that's, and.
Ms. Gilmore, you need to be on the microphone, microphone, please.
Kingman or Bullhead City, they don't have their own veterinarians. They have to contract out to a vet office and they're averaging $150,000 a year in vet bills. You've got to have a vet to do rabies. Okay? That's the number one. So they're taking animals to a veterinarian to get the rabies done. They have to transport the animals to their vet in Kingman to do the spay and neuters. And now Bullhead City has come to us and said, we don't want to use her up in Kingman. She's charging us too much. Will you do our spay and neuters for us? And when we build our new shelter, will you send one of your vets down to us one day a week to all, to do all of our spay and neuters? Mojave County came to me, Nicole's their director. I hired her. We used to run that shelter. And she said, Patty, will you do our surgeries? And I said, nope, we'll never work for Mojave County again. So they, they all want a piece of our pie and it's not really a pie. They all want a piece of our medical. Because not a lot of shelters, unless they're in big populated areas like Phoenix and Las Vegas, have their own veterinarians. We do. Because I swore that I would get this city a clinic where our shelter would also have veterinarians. So that's a big thing, the medical. It's huge. Pharma for the veterinary industry has gone up 70% in the last four years.
And Mr. Dolan, just to answer your question as far as what other municipalities across the state are doing, I actually, that's one thing when we were trying to iron all of this out, that I actually did. And across the state, there was nothing, apples to apples. Either other municipalities have their own shelter, such as Bullhead, and they're doing their own thing. A lot of the agencies down in the valley, they have, several of them have temporary holding facilities at their places that where they hold the three and five days, and then they ship everything off to Maricopa County. And how that works is Maricopa County takes them in, but Maricopa County also controls all the licensing for those jurisdictions. And then they turn around and retain that licensing. The only thing that was halfway equivalent was the city of Kingman has their contract with Mojave County. But again, Humane is a separate entity, not a government agency. And Kingman, the city of Kingman pays the percentage of the animals they bring in as the population each year. And that's reassessed every single year with Mojave County. But across the state of Arizona, there's nothing out there that we could compare apples to apples on, but we did take a look at that.
Like I said, that's just my biggest concern was I, I was, I'm told that it was a lot of take it or leave it. And if we don't do this, we're fine. We'll put in a pet condos and things like that. Well, that's, as a community member, it's been here most of my whole life. You know, I've supported the Humane Society. Everyone, you know, has and it's, it's supported by the community. And it's just, like I said, it's fiscally conservative. We shouldn't be using tax dollars to offset any of our, we have amazing nonprofits here, but we need to, if we're providing a service, we need to be in line with what that service is. So that's just my concern. But thank you for what you guys do for the community. And I think it's very informative for the community to realize some of these issues that we do have. And I think it's a great opportunity for it. So thank you.
All right. So.
Mayor.
I really want to open the public hearing.
Oh, that's right.
Let's, let's get to the public comments. So would anyone like to address the city council on this item? All right. I'm going to close the public hearing. So thank you. I at least was able to check one thing off my box on this item. So I, from my perspective, I think we're trying to draw conclusions, the things that, and make alignments and comparisons that might not really be there. So the end of the day, we are responsible for animals in, in our town. So I grew up here as well. There used to be a feral cat problem in the village and, and we don't have that issue anymore. So there's animals such as the hoarding case that Ms. Gilmore had mentioned and others that do we really want to be in the business of? So, you know, for $300,000, it just, this is the contract that's in front of us this evening. Do we want to build a shelter and have some sort of fixed cost to pay for, for the monthly piece of that? Do we want to hire staff to do that? We won't be able to get staff for 300 grand. And then the vet bill, as we just talked about, there's requirements. So, I mean, just the reality of all of these things, like $300,000 is, is a, is a deal. From this perspective, we, we have to do something with, with these animals. And it, it falls on the taxpayers. Otherwise, we would have animals roaming around our community or, or the feral cat issue that we used to have underneath the, the bridge. So I, I mean, I think we need to take a look at, are the services offered what we need? And would we be able to do it any cheaper? Or do we have any alternatives? And I don't know that we have that based on what I've heard tonight. So is there any other comments or questions for members of the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, Councilmember Dolan.
I, I agree with you, but we have the transparency to the community. We, our job is to be fiscally conservative for the community. Great. The community, you know, if, if we want to raise. Great, the community, you know, if, if we want to raise taxes and do more for the, for the different nonprofits to offset them, great. But my biggest problem is there should be more transparency. And if, 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 if we were to go through this and it turns out, yeah, we are getting a great deal, this is a great deal, great, let's do it. But my concern was, is from the beginning, it was, here's our number, take it or leave it. And we didn't have those discussions of, does it, does it pencil out for the community? And I just don't believe that we just, you know, I, I would almost much, much rather have maybe our own shelter. If there's an organization that could say, well, you either have to agree with us or we're going to walk away. That does concern me that we can sign a contract right now, but what if it doubles or triples? And maybe there is a, a point where it is fiscally responsible for us to have our own. And I don't know what that is unless we have that discussion and we have those numbers and we have that transparency for the community. Because of course, these are tax dollars. So that is my concern. I just want to see that transparency and that we have that discussion and we have those numbers and that we, we know we're doing the right thing. I just don't want someone to tell me that it's a good deal. The numbers should speak for itself. And we didn't even have really any numbers in the presentation until, you know, how many animals are we talking about? We don't even know what numbers we're talking about versus, okay, those are, that's a good discussion to have and we should have those things for the future, so.
Mayor, can I ask one more question? Do you guys do vaccination clinics is what I understand? Which allows the veterinarians to have more available space for emergencies? Is this correct?
Actually, we do, we partner with Humane twice a year. And the next one's coming up on September 28th from eight to 11 at the Humane Society. And basically they're done like a drive-through clinic. People come in off of Sweetwater, come in through the building, they, they're greeted, they have a form that they fill out, they pay for the vaccinations. They go through, the, the two veterinarians that are there for that day will vaccinate all the animals. They come through us, we handle the licensing portion and they go out the other gate. And those are done twice a year.
So then it does allow for the emergency room visits in the very few vaccinations, vaccine, sorry, it is late. Veterinary clinics, it does allow for that as well. So again, I, I'm agreeing with the mayor. I think that I don't think we could do this service as well as you guys do for $300,000 a year.
You're agreeing with me, Councilmember Campbell, would you like to make a motion?
I motion to, yes. I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the animal care and shelter service contract with the Western Arizona Humane Society from October 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2029, and approve the use of the contingency fund for the additional 50,000 for year one.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Campbell, a second from Vice Mayor Moses. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, excuse me, motion carries five to two.
Thank you, thank you. All right, you might have thought we only had two items left, but really we have four, we're going to go back to items. Yeah, so, well, I think through the discussion that you guys thought we only had two items left, that's why I was like, let's get on it. All right, so the next two items are actually items that were brought forward by council members in two different fashions. And so we'll start with item 7.6, which is discussion and possible direction regarding resignation of city board commission and committee members to seek public office. This was brought forward by Councilmember Lane and it was brought forward in a future discussion item portion of the council meeting. And it did receive two seconds. So I'm going to turn it over to you, Councilmember Lane, to take this item away for us.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, I appreciate it. So the reason I wanted to bring this forward is, is I, during this last election, I saw what could have, could have become a problem. It did not. So, but I would like to start off by saying this is in no way a reflection of the people who recently ran for city council while sitting on one of our boards. We had two members of our boards run for city council and both of those individuals followed the procedures that are set forth in the city code. The reason I want to put this on the agenda for discussion were due to issues I saw, which could have risen as a result of this last election. For example, one of the candidates who was sitting on a board did win a seat on the city council and will be sworn in during the November 26, 2024 city council meeting. Any items heard by a board in which the electee voted while a member of that board should recuse themselves if that item then comes before the city council. Our boards are there to advise the council on items within their scope. They should not vote on an item while on the council that they voted for while a board member. It's not fair to the applicant. This goes for all boards that serve at the will of the city council. As mentioned, a board member won election to the city council. That happened during the primary election. It could have gone the other way and not been filled until the general election, which is on November the 5th, 2024. In that case, there would have been many agenda items where the new council member should, in all fairness, recuse themselves and not cast a vote. In matters where there could be this conflict, many elected bodies at the local, state and federal level require the person running for public office to step down when they become a candidate for another position. Our boards and commissions are great stepping stones for people to learn the ins and outs of how a municipality runs. We encourage those that run for city council to apply for and sit on the boards to gain this valuable insight. As our city grows, I foresee a large contingent of our citizens applying for these seats to gain that knowledge. During our last round of appointments, we had dozens of our residents apply for our boards. During the interviews, it was apparent there are a lot of talented people here in Lake Havasu City. And many of them have indicated that they would one day like to run for city council. We are not hurting for qualified residents to step up and apply for our boards. I believe we could have an issue in the future where conflicts will arise. And I believe it's good practice to have board members step down when running for city council. I would like our city code to reflect that anyone who becomes a candidate for city council must resign or be removed from any board or commission under the purview of the city council. So I just think it's more fair to the rest of the public and better for the city to have a procedure in place to ensure that there is continuity as we move forward. And, and a procedure that if somebody's sitting on a board, they should recuse themselves from that board and step down while they're running for city council. I just think it's the appropriate thing to do. With that, I'd love to hear some discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember Lane. So with this item, since it came before us through the future agenda discussion item on the council, we're basically here to have a discussion this evening and a consensus. If the consensus of the council is to do something and related, related to this, we would direct the staff to go forward and draft whatever that something is. And then it would come back for introduction at a future meeting with final adoption at a subsequent meeting. So that's what we're here to do, I'll start some discussion on it. I, I see both sides of this. So the, the first, there, there is relevant information. And there's also precedent at state, with state laws and the resigned to run law. So if someone were to run for office and seek another office, they have to resign to run. That's already in state statute. There's good reasons for that. So what the resigned to run law would be is if any member of us in our current offices, so as council members or as mayor, if we were to run for another term in those same seats, we wouldn't have to resign to run. We would fulfill our obligation here and we still could run. However, if one of us were to want to run for a different office. So say I wanted to run for, for county supervisor, thank you Vice Mayor Moses. I would have to resign my current position if that, if I was in an off cycle for that. So, so right now, if I were to have wanted to run for county supervisor in this cycle, the one that just happened during the primary election, I would have had to resign my office as mayor to do so. However, if I wanted to run for county supervisor in two years, which is not an option, because they all, all five of them are at the same time, I would not have to resign to run. I would fulfill my, my term here. If I was successful in that election, I then would take, take office. However, the other side of that is I do see value in citizens that are serving on our city council to have experience and to have served in a capacity where they have to understand open meeting laws and posting requirements and quorums and all of those types of things. And so to balance the two things, now that I heard your remarks, I actually think there's some merit to following the state statute of the resigned to run. Like I do think people should serve and I would love for everyone to have the most experience coming forward as a candidate. We all know how much misinformation is spread during a campaign, not necessarily intentionally, just, it's unknown. It's unknown information, we just might not know that. And with having experienced candidates running, I, I think that helps tell the message. So I could support some change to code that would follow the statute of the resigned to run. But I see the other side of it as well, so. Councilmember Lane?
Mr. Mayor, are we talking about like all the boards, like airport advisory board? Are we talking about PED, not those ones?
Just our boards, committees and commissions, but Councilmember Lane, this is your item, that's how I understood it, but.
Yeah, because the, the PED, those boards, those are the boards we sit on. If you're talking about people that are sitting on those other private boards, those aren't city boards, those are non-city boards. I'm talking about the ones that actually report to the city council, such as Parks and Rec, Airport Advisory.
Planning and zoning.
Planning and zoning, any of those boards that we are interviewing and appointing people to those boards. At the time that they become a candidate for the city council, I think they should step down off of that board. And the only reason I put the verbiage in there as remove is we may have a candidate someday that says, I'm not stepping back. So then we would have to remove them. But I, they serve at the will of the council. So I, I believe that it's better for our city for those people to then step back, concentrate on running for the city council and letting somebody else have a chance at a board.
So I, I, I'm hearing what you're saying and I'm, and I'm processing it. But what if this person becomes a candidate and they don't win, then they just gave up their position?
But they can always reapply. We have openings all the time, they can always reapply.
Yeah, but our last, I mean, we saw that in the last, we had some big applications and there's no promise that they'll get that position back.
And there was some very talented people in there that, that didn't get the shot, that now have to go through that again in order to be appointed to the board to fill the seat that is now going to be vacated.
Councilmember Campbell?
Has there ever been a problem with this? I mean, have there been a situation that somebody was serving on planning and zoning and got elected and then didn't recuse themselves on maybe one or two things that they ever voted on? I just don't know if we're changing a code for no reason. It just seems like, and I'm listening to everything you're saying. I, I really liked the letter that you produced there, letting me understand which direction you're going. But to me, I love the fact that a lot of these people on boards and commissions, they understand as a candidate, they're very involved. And then when they do sit here, they have more information that's going on the community than actually, you know, how, like, we're only talking a few months here that you're going to be jumping off. So how many things are going to be voted? Like, what, how many months? You, you start in July and then the prime, I don't know, how many months is that? So we might only be missing four or five times they voted. How many times does it really come to the council that it makes a difference?
Well, and, and that's why this is a process, right? So it's not about any particular person. And, and in this particular case where we had somebody that, that got elected, they got elected in the primary. But in the future, they may not get elected till the general. We have council members that don't get elected till the general. And they sit on that board all the way up until the time that they get elected. And then they come on the city council two weeks later. There could be several months and months of things that they've heard where that they should recuse themselves. And I just think it's cleaner and more fair to the applicant that may be going before a board and asking for something. And for the, the, the person running for the city council as well to be able to learn. I, I think it's great that everybody on the council should sit on some board at some point to learn all the different things that we do. Because we can all say, we didn't know what we didn't know when we started. And we learn a lot. And I think it's great that they sit on these boards. I just think at the time they became an official candidate and says, I am now going to run for city council, they should step off a board that reports to the city council.
And to clarify also, Councilmember Campbell, is if it follows my, my thought of the resigned to run law, which I'm not 100% familiar with, I mean, I'd have to familiarize myself when the first introduction would come forward. This would be something like when signatures are due. So it would be, it could be April, they would resign versus June or July, as you'd mentioned. But this isn't the first election that this happened. We, we had a candidate that served on our Parks and Rec advisory board and either the last election cycle or the one prior to that, that was also a candidate. And for our council, I mean, this isn't, this has nothing to do with this election. But as council members, we all know that we can't use city resources to campaign. So, you know, we don't bring clipboards to collect signatures to the council chambers. We don't use city email, we don't use the city logo on any campaign materials. I mean, that, we know that, we, we have the experience to know that. But some of our board and committee and commission members might not have that experience or knowledge. And I do know that that's occurred. And so, and that's just not, not okay. I mean, that, that's, and I'm not calling anyone out. I mean, that's, this has been over multiple election cycles. This isn't something that is, even just because of this one, I, I mean, Councilmember Lane is, is bringing it up. You know, for whatever reason you're bringing it up, I think it's the, the election's over. And so it's the best time to do it. I, I believe you were also the one that brought up the campaign sign issue last time that we addressed right after the election was over.
Yes, I did. And the reason I waited till after the election was over is this doesn't affect anybody right now. There's nobody on any, any of our boards that are running for office right now. It won't affect anybody for at least two years. So I waited till the election was over and then brought it forward so that I foresee issues that could arise in the future. And I thought we should put it into the code now. So when those issues do arrive, and as you said, we've had other candidates that, that didn't always abide by the rules. And this time the candidates did and they, they did a good job. And, but in the future, that may not happen.
Sure, yeah, I'll weigh in, just kind of my thoughts.
Vice Mayor Moses, can you also weigh in and take over the meeting for a minute?
Sure, oh, watch out. Yeah, so my thoughts are this, I completely agree with Mayor and a lot of what's said here. It is an invaluable experience to serve on the boards. And, and they do, they serve at the will of the council. They're, these are advisory boards. These are, these are supposed to be people who are relative experts in the field that we need them to be experts in. You know, the, the airport advisory tells us if, hey, does, does this make sense within that industry? Planning and zoning tells us, does this make sense within that industry? They're not supposed to be political. And, and I don't care who you are, if you're going through an election, you're going to say or do or make decisions that are political, just for the sake of your campaign. And we need those, we, we need the integrity of those boards to be intact. So while I want them to get the experience, I also want to hear from experts about what is, what is an industry standard that makes sense? Not necessarily what the political opinion is. When they come to us, that's when we're supposed to, you know, make the stupid calls about what's, which political way we want to go. I want more experts on our boards that make sense. We've seen so many from planning and zoning where they deny things because of parking issues. And then we send them the park case, say, hey, look at the parking code. And then they come back with us with no recommended changes. So in my mind, they're making decisions to deny things, not based on what is an appropriate industry standard, but off of political decisions. And so I think this is a, I, I'm glad you brought this up, David. I think it's a, I think this is a great idea. And I think this will balance people getting that experience, that extremely much needed experience of knowing a little bit about the city and how things should go. And then while maintaining that integrity of being an advisory board and giving us good, strong industry knowledge of what, what that should look like. So I agree with this path forward and, and I'd be for it with, you know, as soon as you pull, pull a packet and start collecting signatures, that's when I think you should jump off. That's my personal opinion.
All right, so if this, intent of this public discussion is to, is to build consensus on all of this. I'm going to open the public hearing real quick and then we'll come back, grab consensus, so we can give staff direction. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Just for the fun of it, hi, it's Bonnie. There's nobody else here, this is like the perfect time for you to have this discussion. Wow, amazing. I don't know anything about this discussion, but it seems to me like it should have more people. I was really hoping that because of how late it was, you guys would just go, you know what? Let's table the rest of the agenda, go home and go to bed and get refreshed for the next meeting. But apparently, I didn't, it's.
Because one of our biggest fans, Ms. Toy, you know that we don't table anything. Yeah, we, we have the discussion.
That's not true.
Yeah, we have the discussion.
Except for twice tonight.
Yeah. By action of, of motion, yeah.
Yes, apparently people can't.
Here to work, Bonnie.
So.
But all this, this item also, Ms. Toy, we'll make a consensus and then there'll be two public hearings that will follow this. So this is just a discussion. Uh, so this is just a discussion to put it on a future agenda. If that's the will of the council or not to put on a future agenda.
Okay. Because you know, the whole resign to run law is really odd anyway, because perfect example is Kamala Harris is still vice president. She did not run, uh, resign as vice president to run for president. I'm pretty certain that there are other examples in that same leadership role of people who have not resigned and they still ran for different public offices. I don't understand why someone on the city board or commission who does not hold the responsibilities of a governor or a senator, why they would be required to resign if, you know, Governor DeSantis did not resign. So he's still governor of Florida. It would, it would seem to me it should not be an issue that, uh, someone on a board would have to resign. But that's the whole point of them recusing themselves as needed. There you go.
Thank you. And the resign to run law is Arizona law. So that's the difference between Florida and California. So, yeah, thank you though. Would anyone else like to address the city council on this item? All right, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Let's grab consensus. So, uh, councilmember Lynn, are you open to having language come forward for future council meeting?
Yeah, I would like to see once their name is on the ballot. I'd be okay. The pulling the packets, I think that's a little early cause not everybody always gets a signature. So I, I would be okay with them once they're on the ballot.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Coke?
I feel the same way.
Thank you. Councilmember Dolan?
I agree. Same thing. Probably once the, once they're on the ballot. Um, I guess my, my biggest concern is like, you know, said that situation like planning and zoning is a perfect example that we're in. Luckily, you know, councilmember Lane or he has resigned from the spot. But to have some guidance for that situation in the future, I think that that was my biggest concern with it. Of course, the, you know, if you have issues where people are utilizing their position to, I mean, that's, that's another issue. Um, you know, it's an, like, yes, I would definitely support some, something coming back. Like I said, after they were on the ballot.
Thank you.
Future discussion.
Vice Mayor Moses?
I'm going to stick to mine. I'm going to stick to my opinion, uh, when you pull, when you pull a packet and start collecting signatures, that it gets pretty real, gets pretty campany at that point. Um, and, and like I said, uh, has nothing to do with anybody except for the integrity of our boards, of our recommendation boards. And, and the more we can, the longer we can protect our boards, the better.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Mayor, I like when you actually become a candidate because look at how many people pulled a package last time. And we went through that and several of them never got their signatures once they realized how intense it was. And at that point, it'd be better for them to continue to sit in the capacity. They shouldn't have to give up their capacity. If they choose not to proceed, we get cancellations all the time once a package is pulled. So I think once you're a candidate.
Thank you. And then councilman Lane?
Yeah, I've gone back and forth on this in, in my head a couple of times where I've thought, okay, once they turn in their signatures, now we know they are a candidate. But then they also do start campaigning as soon as they pull that packet and they start attending to the meetings and they start telling people, please sign my petition. I am a candidate for the city council. Um, and so, uh, I'm going to say that I would like to see the language that when they actually pull a packet and say, I am a candidate for city council. Or when they turn the packet in to say that I am a official candidate. So like they have pulled the packet, but now they've turned in the paperwork and say, I am going to start collecting signatures. I am a candidate for city council. And they start going to the meetings and they're out on the street and they're knocking on doors. And they're saying, I am a candidate for city council. Would you please sign my petition so that I can get on the ballot? So I think when they turn in the paperwork so that they can officially gather signatures, that's the time they should step down.
Thank you. Ms. Carrie?
Yep, we have plenty, we have consensus where I'm going to bring an item back. And then at that time we'll argue about when exactly resign to run means in Lake Havasu City.
Thank you. All right, we have consensus. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item.
You sure we can talk about it more?
I promise I got it.
Yeah, I took back over the meeting, Vice Mayor Moses, yeah. All right, item seven point seven is a, um, uh, ordinance number 24 dash 1343, amending, uh, city code chapter nine point three zero, noise related to construction of buildings and projects. This was brought forward by councilmember Campbell. However, this was brought forward in a different mechanism, uh, through working with my office, which is how you're able to do things, uh, to get things on the agenda as well. So there's multiple ways that councilmembers can get things on the agenda, this being one of them. So the difference here is that there is actually, um, this would be the introduction, should that be the direction of the council. So I'm going to turn over to councilmember Campbell, this was her item. Uh, but you will notice that there is an opportunity for action on this item, which, uh, if this, uh, whatever the action is, then we'll come forward at our next meeting for final adoption and would be codified at that time, should, uh, that be the will of the council. So councilmember Campbell?
Well, I'll try and make this really short. What happened in a nutshell is as we know that the planning and zoning, um, the building department is doing a great job of changing into a, the technology is going to be improving. And so it'll make it that a city builder can go, go online and file their applications and submit their plans via online, making it easier and more efficient for the contractor, making it easier and more efficient for the city planning. Obviously this has taken a few years to get through the process, but one of the things that they tested this last summer in a hundred and twenty degrees weather was decided to push a button that said, at, at the time you receive your permit, it came with what I understand, uh, the, the noise ordinance, um, that we see in front of us. The noise ordinance in front of us, um, most of us haven't even looked at it in probably, I think, a decade. Um, and unbeknown to me that in this noise, noise ordinance, it said that on Fridays, contractors cannot start until seven o'clock in the morning, until seven o'clock in the evening. You can go and get a permit from the city on a special day that you may want to work prior to that. I, they, I thank the staff for pushing that button because my phone blew up and thought the whole city council has now decided contractors cannot go to work in a hundred and twenty degrees weather until seven o'clock in the morning. So because of that, I got a lot of pushback. I also contacted the public works department. I said, what time do you guys start? And they said, we're at, we're up at five, five thirty. When a water break line goes in the middle of night, I'm like, are you getting the permit to be able to go out there and fix that? No, we're not. And being a contractor that, um, deals with asphalt, I sure in the heck didn't want my, uh, employees starting the job at seven in the morning cause they, like many people in the city, want to get off work at two o'clock and go to the bars and restaurants and eat. So, um, I just think this is an outdated, um, noise ordinance, number one. So there was conversation that I was just want to get rid of the noise ordinance altogether. Well, in this, this situation, I would like to get rid of this code because I started really thinking about it. No different than the water meter situation. When we were asked that you have to go to the city and you're going to have to ask them to turn on the water meter for you. Um, trust me, if you talk to stakeholders, you obviously don't realize that that's not possible. And my thought is a city, uh, when I get a permit, man, I got a grading permit, a sewer permit, uh, you know, a regular building permit, all the permits in the world. And now I'm being asked to go to the city and asked to, uh, work a little earlier or do a night shift because i- it's just so hot outside and just for the concrete to cure properly. So I have to go to you guys and ask for a special time. They notify all the neighbors, which just costs us more time. And then what if we have a monsoon? What if we have a rain issue? What if we have something comes up in construction like any other business that says you can't work in that permit capacity? So then what do you do? You got to go contact the city, then they got to tell the neighbors. I don't, so then I asked the public works and, and code enforcement, do we get a lot of complaints on construction noise? I do know that we get complaints where people are having their boom boxes blowing, blaring. But our original noise ordinance that we put into place, that we changed just recently, already has all of this in here that we can measure sounds and noise. And every, most of the jobs that we show up to do construction, most people are pretty neighborly. They come out and they're looking, hey, what are you doing, going on? And they're very patient. The dog that barks across the street from me nonstop is never probably going to go away. That construction job is gonna go away, be neighborly, um, put up with the noise, the hammering. It, it's gonna happen. So that's why I brought this to you guys today. Uh, eat, one thing for sure, if you don't want to get rid of it altogether, we should alter it. Or you guys can explain to all the contractors that they can't go to work until seven o'clock on Fridays.
Thank you, councilmember Campbell. So a couple of things, uh, thank you for bringing this forward for the discussion. But what is in front of us now is there actually is an ordinance in code. Uh, so it's in your packet. Everything that has a line through it would be removing the whole code section, chapter nine point three zero point zero seven zero, construction of buildings and projects. There still is a separate noise ordinance that's not part of this. But if we were to, um, get rid of this entire code in its entirety, there has to be an exemption of, of where that would be. So when it comes to, um, the, the, the challenge that we had is, uh, self-development services just launched main star, which is our new land management system. Fantastic stuff. It's going to allow all the things that councilmember Campbell had mentioned, uh, and many more. Um, as part of that, they, there was an inadvertent error that they took the noise ordinance that de, that detailed a weekend as Friday and Saturday. Because on a, on a, on a noise ordinance, Friday and Saturday is, is the weekend. That's when the bars are busy. That's when the restaurants are nightly entertainment, concerts, th- those types of things. However, if you read this code section that's in front of us right now on page two, under, uh, uh, C, uh, again, it has the line through, because this is a proposed based on councilmember Campbell's, um, discussion, is weekends and holidays are excluded, um, and weekends are Saturday, Sunday and holiday. So it's correct in the code as it appears today. It was just an error that was put in on the main star building permit at the time using the noise ordinance of Friday, Saturday. So if you look at, again, page two, letter C, uh, says weekends and holidays excluded. Notwithstanding the foregoing, construction work shall not begin prior to seven AM and must stop by seven PM and concrete pouring shall not begin prior to six AM and must stop by seven PM on any Saturday, Sunday or holiday unless other times are authorized by permit. So, uh, my contention is I've never had anyone in the construction trades ever bring this forward to me as a, as an issue. Um, I would like to keep the code section here because should we have a bad actor come in, we need to have something for our police department, our code enforcement to look towards to say, you can't do this. Now, in, in favor of our developers or contractors that have to do a, a midnight pour or they have to do something out of the ordinary, there's code sections that allow them an opportunity to get a, a permit for that. So they grab a permit. Um, I, I think councilmember Campbell, you mentioned in your opening comments that, that, you know, the city, uh, public works department doesn't get a permit to fix a, a break in the middle of the night. Emergency stuff is not, yeah, that just happens. I mean, we have to fix emergency stuff just as anyone else has to. So it, this already, the code section, as it's written, already provides provisions for our, um, construction trades companies to be able to ask for things outside of these hours. Uh, the weekends are correctly identified as a Saturday, Sunday and a holiday. In our code section, again, it was inadvertent because they grabbed the noise ordinance, separate ordinance, uh, which is a Friday, Saturday, um, is what a weekend is defined in that section of the code. Um, so I think we keep the code section as is. I've never had, again, a contractor bring this forward, uh, but I have had citizens complain. And if there's nothing for us to do except say, sorry, you just have to deal with it for the six months that they're building the house next door. Or I, I had a person that was building a, a pool, uh, next, like kind of behind my backyard. I live in a kind of a weird area where like behind the yard is their backyard is mine, not their house. So, um, they built it and they did it all until like midnight. I didn't have a problem with this. I never called and complained. Uh, but if I did complain and had an issue, I would hope that the city would be able to do something. I mean, I do think midnight's a little egregious to have big old spotlights and pounding black walls and stuff. Um, but again, I didn't have an issue with it, but some other neighbor might have an issue with it. We would have no ability, but that's just my viewpoint. Uh, open up to other members of the council for your considerations or thoughts? Yeah, councilmember Coke?
Um, so this was interesting. Um, I was married to, am married to, but he was a framer for 20 years in town. And I think I can remember maybe two or three times as we got new housing developments across the town that had HOAs or different areas where they had separate rules within their communities. Um, and I, I remember specifically hearing the conversations where, you know, where the builder knew they were going in and that these HOAs had these issues and these rules. So they just planned accordingly and they would do pickup work until such and such time that they were allowed to start running their equipment. And they made it work through the contractor that was actually doing the building. I, I would really worry that if we get some rogue construction company that comes in here and we don't have a tool in our tool belt to stop them, they could do 24 hour framing. And I'm just speaking framing because that's the world I lived in for 20 years. But I think that would make our citizens' life horrible. And now you're going to take away their ability, our ability to stop that. I, I just, I think striking out all of this is a bit excessive when it's not been a big issue to us. I don't remember ever having, um, his job ever stopped. They said you couldn't, you know, you just can't work that early in the morning. I think it's kind of given where we live that you have to start working earlier in the summer months and you get off earlier. And I, I, I just, I think this really takes some tools out of our toolbox to control that. So I would be concerned about that.
Councilmember Dolan?
Tools in our toolbox, that's funny. Since we're talking about construction, tough crowd. There's only like two of you, you guys can laugh, come on. Um, yeah, I mean, I grew up, I grew up here in Havasu doing construction and, and I, you know, I, I think what we have now works. I, I could see why everybody would have freaked out over the seven o'clock on Friday message going out. I could definitely see that being an issue. But I think what we have now is, you know, five to 10 in the, uh, in the summer, six to 10 in the winter time, weekends and holidays, seven to seven. You know, I, like, I think concrete pours if they can get special approval for things like that. But having the framer show up anytime before that and lights in the backyard and all that. It just, I think what we have works and I'm, I'm glad we're fixing that seven to seven thing on Fridays. Cause yeah, I think that would be kind of crazy. But I think what we have, you know, like I said, having grown up in construction myself and being out there at five o'clock, it's you or you or Ivan, it's dark and you get your tools ready and you're ready to go. Um, you know, of course, my concern is with something, if we take this away, you know, it's like, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, Catherine Williams with the, you know, the, the ordinance is, you know, when we show up, you know, we hear music, don't we have to go out and take readings? Well, if we show up and they stop working, there's nothing to read, there's nothing to, no, we weren't making noise, you know? So I guess that's my concern is if we switch to, you know, no, no, they were hammering 10 minutes ago. I swear, you know, that kind of stuff.
Yes, councilmember Dolan, um, we're always trying to gain compliance. Um, I actually looking into this prior to the council meeting. Um, we had a total of nine calls in 2023 and six calls in 2024 where we actually sent an officer out, um, to one of these suspected violations of the ordinance. Um, no enforcement action was taken, we gained compliance, things were fine. Um, we do have a number of calls that we don't track, uh, by dispatch that ultimately they just educate the caller about the ordinance itself and no officers ever sent. But that's, it's very minimal.
Okay. So like if they call at five thirty and they complain that it's noisy in the summer and it's like, well, at five o'clock, they're allowed to start working, you know, that kind of education?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect.
Mayor, I'm just confused because I saw it all. We were in your office, we had that code ordinance in front of us. We saw everything and I would assume that would be all in here. And of course, this is my discussion, so I didn't sit here and read through the same thing that we'd been looking at. Cause this, I asked for this like probably two months ago. So, um, I'm sorry to say that it's not in here, why you're saying that that's the exclusion. Uh, where did that come from then? Again, the seven AM to seven PM and plus it was in a code ordinance. We all sat in your office and read it over and over and over. And now all of a sudden it's all struck and you're like, hey, it's not there anymore. We were wrong, we gave you misinformation again. And you're wondering why I'm wasting time on this and we're all up until 10:15. Why didn't somebody in the office just tell me, hey, we made a big mistake. What that was, was not accurate information and we could have, I could have said, please don't put it on the agenda then. But I assume that we were on the same page, but by the look of this, uh, another miscommunication, obviously.
Yes.
So I apologize for bringing it to you. Um, you guys go tell the contractors that they made a mistake and, and it's not seven in the morning now because it was extremely confusing and it was very frustrating to be a hundred and twenty degrees out. And I'm trying to manage this massive confusion. And so when I just said, hey, for, for just construction purposes, only let's strike it all. And then let's discuss, and I want to hear everybody's voice if they're saying, hey, I still want some control or I don't want control. But what would have been really nice is if two and a half months ago, I wasn't given all this misinformation. I mean, I'm not going to, I'm not, I'm not on this pay scale to just decipher every part of this when I've been told something and I visually see it and all the contractors are bringing it to me. So, you know, I wish this would have been brought to me before that this was a whole miscommunication and a mistake.
Councilmember Campbell, I can appreciate, uh, your comments. And, uh, with all due respect, when you get focused on something, you don't always hear what, what we're saying. So the document that we had in front of us was a. So the document that we had in front of us was a permit that you sent me a text of that had the code section with the error on it. And it did absolutely said that the weekend was defined as Friday and Saturday. And so when we had the code section, you asked, I want the construction stuff to have, to have stopped. You and I looked at it, we looked at it at the league conference as well, before this item went onto the agenda, I said, this is where it's at. You said, yes, let's have the conversation. And so we brought it forward. I am not in the business of ever giving you misinformation. So what, your comments did not say that.
Okay. Well, my comments are that the staff, I got misinformation when that came through.
I don't know that that, that to be true. I will defend myself quickly. I do not give misinformation. We all have the same access to the same code section. It's available at lhcaz.gov and we can take a look at it. I don't know if you had any conversations, Mr. Knutson, if you have any, any thoughts on the conversation you had, but.
Mayor and council member Campbell, I mean, if there's a miscommunication that took place along staff, I'd love to hear about it, to have a better understanding of what, what occurred there. The code's in place, so a lot of times kind of a rule of thumb, when something is sourced in terms of the code, first thing we do is draw the code, pick it up, take a look at it, read through it. If there's any miscommunication that occurred, I mean, that's a big thing to say in, in terms of.
Didn't I send it to you, all of it, two and a half, three months ago when this all started?
Sent me a picture of the permit that happened through the software glitch that, and then air through the software that, that took place.
And then we read into, okay, I'm not going to talk about it anymore. I'm just telling you that I guess we just, okay, my fault, I'm bad.
Councilmember Campbell, I don't know this is, you're bad or not, this is a discussion. So if, if the, now that you have the information, do you, it sounds like you don't want to change it either. I mean, not trying to put words in your mouth, I mean, this is.
I've already just heard the will of the council right now and the will of the council, including you, feels that there's no reason to change this, that it's perfectly okay for the contractors to go get permits and if there's a change and just cause more, more work for the staff. And we, like they said, we only have had like nine complaints, six complaints. I just think this is extra work for the contractor to just even have to go do the permit process. Why don't we just put it in here and say, these are your times of operation, but you're, like you're saying, outside that is where you have to go get the permit. But I do think, I just think it's, it's just a lot of work, it's a lot of redundancy and more work for the staff, more work for everybody for possibly six or nine complaints. And until you're the one that has to be sending somebody down to go get the permits and changing things due to weather issues, when most of the contractors in this community are obviously good players, if we're not getting a lot of complaints. But it was more than that, it was the time that was put onto that. There was 16, I mean, we had the noise ordinance, then we had the building noise ordinance and we were all reading through everything and some were even in the building thing. We saw it in the code. Councilwoman Lynn, I think I sent it to you, you were reading it as well. I sent it to Jess and it was definitely there that I said, if it's really a thing, we need to address this. And so that's what we're doing, just to have the discussion. I went to you personally, I didn't do it in front of the council, I just thought if this was a problem, it's a problem. What I wish I was told is that's not the case, it's not seven in the morning. I suppose I could have read the whole thing, but I depended on that. And I still do think that it's, it's just cumbersome for so many contractors that have to be constantly getting permit after permit and just wasting everybody's time. But I've, I've said my, I can hear from the will of the council, I'm perfectly fine with it. Sorry to have wasted your time.
Well, I guess, you know, I, it's turning into something maybe more than it needs to be. I mean, I think the point was, what started this was came from a good place, that was, people were coming to you because there was an issue. Yes, the Friday, 7:00 AM was an issue and we were able to fix that in the process. So I think, I commend you for that, that was good. I'm glad we went through that and figured out what it was and now it's fixed. Now, you know, that, behind us, the question is, I think you're still pretty passionate that we should make these changes and strip this down. Well, if that's great, then maybe we'll just put that up to the council and see if they, I, I personally don't think we need those changes, but you know, I think then we can just to see if the.
I'm removing the item off the agenda if that's okay.
Well, it's, yeah, it's here now, so we're going to have, we have a public hearing. So would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Yes, yes, I would. Funny story, I was talking to.
All right, Ms. Toye, bring the microphone down, yeah, thank you.
I was talking to somebody this afternoon about the noise ordinance being brought forth to the city council tonight and the person said to me, she's from Tucson, she's all, do you know that in Tucson, they start construction at 4:00 AM? I'm like, what? 4:00 AM? So maybe since you're amending codes and stuff like that, you could amend it all across the board so that construction work could start at 4:00 AM. That's all.
Thank you. Would anyone like to address the city council on this item?
Absolutely.
All right. Yeah, so we'll bring it back to council, we'll entertain a motion. Or the item would fail for lack of motion.
Mayor, I move to introduce the ordinance, number 241343, amending city code 9.30 noise ordinance to change time to start time for contractors to 4:00 AM in the morning.
And do we have a second? With no second, is there another motion that the council would like to entertain? All right, so this item fails for lack of motion. We'll move on to the next item, which is item 7.9, which is change order number three for the city core paving rebid project with Pioneer Earth Movers, Inc. Good evening, Mr. Clark.
Mayor, I'll be recusing.
Thank you, councilmember Campbell.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. So I am presenting city core pavement rehabilitation, change order number three. The proposed improvements to the London Bridge deck would be to mill and fill an inch and a half of asphalt pavement, construction of 160 feet, linear feet of new curb and gutter, a full depth reconstruction of roadway at the east roadway approach, an ADA ramp replacement at the east abutment and a west approach mill and fill asphalt resurfacing. Existing conditions at the London Bridge are as follows, you could see some alligator cracking in the asphalt pavement due to a drainage condition in the upper left. And that's where we're going to be replacing 160 feet of curb and gutter. And that's in the eastbound lane. In the upper right, you could see severely alligator cracked pavement, which is, it's typical of a structural failure in the pavement, which we're going to be fully replacing. In the lower left, you could see really scoured curb and gutter. So we're going to replace that as well and we hope to restore the London Bridge deck to its former glory. And the suggested motion is I recommend to approve change order number three for the city core paving rebid project with Pioneer Earth Movers in the amount not to exceed
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yeah, so obviously we have the city core project that's happening right now. We all feel that, the drive in the downtown area. Also on our approved CIP budget is the bridge redex of this project. So what we're looking for is to bring these two projects together to save time and in efficiency. So all of this would be done, Mr. Clark, I believe mid, mid-November, if this was successful this evening?
Yeah.
Okay. So by mid-November, we would have all of this done instead of having to go through a process and do a bid and award to, to do the deck resurfacing, which would, would delay time and all these types of things. This is more of an efficiency project. Are there questions or comments from members of the council?
Mr. Mayor, just have a quick question. Can you go back to the first slide?
This one?
Oh, next one. Can you tell me how far, I, I can't visually really see it on here, how far past off the bridge onto the island side this goes? Are we past, are we past Shugru's? Like how far past?
It just, it looks like it just.
I think it's about 150 feet.
Okay. I just want to make sure that that little crosswalk.
It is the crosswalk, yeah.
Okay.
It takes care of the crosswalk.
Okay, I get lots of pictures of it, so as long as that crosswalk is taken care of, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, we will have to restripe the crosswalks. Any other questions, councilmember Lane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to commend the, the city staff on this. The company's already out there and mobilized and doing, doing work on this core pavement project already. So to bring this forward, it not only saves time, but money as well. So just commend you guys for, for doing this now. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? All right, this is the public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion.
Mayor motion?
Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve change order number three for the city core paving rebid project with Pioneer Earth Movers, Inc. in the amount of $254,299.50.
All right, we have a motion from councilmember Lane, a second from councilmember Coke. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing now, we're ready to vote. No, yes, thank you.
Motion carries with six councilmembers voting yes and one councilmember recusing.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
And our final public hearing of the evening is a cooperative purchase agreement with, excuse me, a cooperative purchase agreement and cooperative purchase of above ground fuel storage and dispensing components with management system from Blue One Energy Equipment. Good evening, Mr. Young.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I've been kicking this around for about seven years and five hours now. I've got a short 30 minute video we're going to watch. Actually, I'm excited to get this in, on and done. This is a above ground fuel facility for the city, has multiple benefits, but the biggest one of all is for emergency help. If for God, something happens with our electricity grid or whatever like that, to operate our generators and our equipment and our emergency services, it will take a lot. With the fuel site at inlet, which is between fire station one and the PD, this will give us access to fuel at any given time, day or night. So I am asking for a cooperative agreement to be approved with Blue One Energy Equipment as a total of $980,978.56. We have budgeted 1.1 million to complete the job. That'll take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Are there questions or comments from members of the council? All right, this is a public hearing, would anyone like to address the city council on this item? Seeing now, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to council for discussion or possible motion. Mayor motion? Councilmember Lane?
I move to approve and authorize the city manager to execute the cooperative purchase agreement, authorize city staff to exercise options to renew and approve the cooperative purchase of the above ground fuel storage and dispensing components with management system from Blue One Energy Equipment in the amount of $980,978.56.
Second.
A motion from councilmember Lane, a second from councilmember Dolan. Is there an additional discussion? All right, we're ready to vote.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, item eight is our call to the public. This is the opportunity where citizens have to address the city council on items within the jurisdiction of Lake Havasu City. We can't have a two-way conversation, your comments are limited to three minutes, there'll be a countdown box on the screen. Would anyone like to address the city council at call to the public?
I'm going to make this short and sweet because my Oreo cookies and milk are probably getting soft right now. The downtown project, is there a completion date on that? When will we get it done? That's one of my questions. Oh, you can't answer my question, I get it, I get it.
Afterwards, we can have it.
Okay. But while I'm here, I do want to compliment my friend back there with the hat, because he was given the challenge of getting that thing leveled out and he did a great job. I was down there a couple of times because I enjoy eating downtown and Bill was there directing traffic and I was impressed. I didn't see an awful lot of dust or anything like that and the project moved along, I think it was only about a week. But then it kind of went into like a metamorphosis stage where nothing happened for probably three weeks, four weeks, I was down there today and it was like five or six guys there. So that's why I'm just wondering, you know, hurry up and wait, it's like the military, you know? He got the job done in a hurry, but then it sat there for a while. So I'm just curious as to when it's going to, when we're going to have the ribbon cutting, you know?
Bill, he'll tell you all about it.
No, he won't. I already asked him. I already asked him. He's a good guy, he doesn't tell stories, but I'd like to know what that is.